Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phil Seth, or correction. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Here.
And sorry about that Vice Mayor DuBois, seven present.
Thank you so much, Beth. So obviously, this is a pretty different meeting for us. I want to go through a couple of housekeeping items first, both for council, staff, and the community. So I'm just going to read a quick script. So pursuant to the provisions of California Governor's Executive Order N 29-20 issued on March 17th to prevent the spread of COVID-19, this meeting will be held by virtual teleconference only with no physical location. The meeting will be broadcast on cable TV Channel 26, live on YouTube at youtube.com/c/cityofpaloalto and at the MidPenn Media Center at midpennmedia.org. Members of the public who wish to participate by computer or phone can do so either by email, phone, or computer. To ensure participation in a particular item, we suggest calling in or connecting online 15 minutes before the item you wish to speak on. Number one, for written communications, please send an email to city.council@cityofpaloalto.org. Number two, spoken public comments via a computer will be accepted through our Zoom meeting. You can go to zoom.us/join and the meeting ID is 362-027-238. Once again, that is 362-027-238. You will be asked to enter an email address and a name, and we request that you identify yourself so that we can then notify you when it is your turn to speak. When you wish to speak on an agenda item, click on the raise hand button and the clerk will activate and unmute speakers in turn. When called, please limit your remarks to the time allotted, which will be two minutes for public comment on our items tonight. A timer will be shown on the computer screen to help you keep track of your time. Number three, spoken public comments using a smartphone can be accepted through the teleconference meeting. To do so, download the Zoom application onto your smartphone and enter the meeting ID, which once again is 362-027-238. Spoken public comments using a phone can call 1-669-900-6833. When you wish to speak on an agenda item, hit star nine on your phone so we know that you wish to speak. You will be asked to provide your first and last name before addressing the council, and you will be advised how long you have to speak, two minutes. Please limit your remarks to that amount of time. You can also find this information on the city's agenda page on the last page of tonight's agenda. Anything else to cover? Beth? Okay.
Not at all, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, we're going to keep to two minutes for public speakers. And when it gets time for council to discuss, I'm going to plan to rotate through our speakers like we did last week, but I'll move sequentially through the names. So, you know, starting with Councilmember Cormac, and then in the next round, Vice Mayor DuBois, after that Councilmember Phil Seth, to try and even it out a bit more. With that, our first item is a special action item, an update and discussion of the COVID-19 health emergency in the city of Palo Alto. And I believe staff has a short presentation.
Well, actually, it may not be that short. We'd like to provide the council and community update on a variety of functions that the city has been engaged in. So let's see if we can get our PowerPoint going here. All right, let's go ahead into the second slide. We actually have several speakers that will be addressing the council and community this evening. And so I'll provide just a brief overview and then turn it over to Ken Duker, our Director of the Office of Emergency Services. First, as noted here, we are very heavily into the operation of our EOC, Emergency Operations Center, and Ken will provide some details of our current status as well as how it relates to the current public health emergency. Then we'll turn it over to Megan Horgan-Taylor, who many of you know by virtue of her work, but you may not be, may not have had the pleasure of actually hearing her present directly. She is the engine behind the communications that the city of Palo Alto has taken on at really an unprecedented level. So Megan will provide a brief overview of our activities as well as our communication channels. Much of the work that is behind the communications that Megan and her team has put together for the community is also going to be joining us this evening. And we'll talk some about a variety of topic areas that have been our primary areas of engagement. At the same time, even the speakers that you're here tonight are just the tip of the iceberg of a whole team of city staff that have, in some ways, taken on second jobs, moving from their normal duties, whether it be in the Community Services Department, the Library Department, and are now really providing the content behind the communications that the community sees on an ongoing basis. So these employees have been redeployed, both in terms of their location, working remotely now, as well as the specific topic areas that they have taken on. We've also, at the same time, continued much of our routine city business. As one of the primary priorities that we pointed out early in this emergency was to maintain a sense of normalcy to the extent that we can so that the ongoing business of the city is ready to roll when the emergency orders are lifted. Third, in terms of the day-to-day services, our essential services and the safety of our workforce continue to be a highest priority for us as an organization. Obviously, this includes our core public safety functions, police and fire, Office of Emergency Services, and also our critical infrastructure that our utilities departments as well as public works departments are responsible for ensuring are maintained and operating on a 24/7 basis. Rumi will speak to some of the workforce issues that are really at the core of concerns from our city staff as we continue into the second period of the shelter-in-place order. And then next, in terms of our evolving plans and protocols related to our coronavirus impact scenarios, we're maintaining close communication with our partners, whether they be agencies such as the County of Santa Clara as well as numerous other levels of state and federal government that we're engaged with on an ongoing basis. At the same time, we are maintaining close communications here in Palo Alto, and Kristin O'Keane will speak to the communication channels that have been established with our community-based organizations, our nonprofits, that are really our key partners in delivering services to the people of Palo Alto, as well as the ongoing business support, programming, and information sharing that we've done on an ongoing basis. And Michelle Pushe Flaherty will speak to our activities in that area and anticipating some council discussion of next steps there. And then finally, we are tracking, and in the report that the council received in preparation for this evening, our fiscal situation. And clearly, we as organizations throughout the country and really around the world, public and private, have been grappling with the fiscal impacts of the emergencies that we find ourselves in the midst of. That Kylie will report on our analysis, our estimates of the situation as it unfolds, as well as provide some context for immediate actions that we have taken, as well as the upcoming fiscal year budget discussions that the city council will be undertaking within the next roughly month. So with that, and with variation on sequence, we'll provide that information to the council and then stand ready for your discussion on next steps. So with that, let me turn it over to Ken Duker.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Shakata, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening, virtually with you. We're going to go to the next slide. I'm going to just talk a little bit about our EOC structure. So the structure of the Emergency Operations Center. This won't be on the test for you, but I think it's important for everybody, including the community, to understand what it means to have an Emergency Operations Center activated and how that changes, to a large extent, how we're doing the city's business and why we're doing it this way. I'm going to spare you the lecture on the instant command system, but essentially, this is very standard and all of the cities, certainly in this county and the Bay Area, have activated their EOCs with their respective people filling the various slots. So Mr. Shakata and I are at the top of this organization. This is known as the incident command position. So big decisions are made up here along with all of those in the white-colored boxes that are immediately below us, whether that's the Public Safety Advisors, my colleagues Chief Johnson and Chief Blackshire, our city attorney, and so forth. And then we move down into the respective branches and operating sections. So we have operations. Those are the people who are doing things. In a more traditional emergency, there'd be a lot of field work here. We have certainly a fair bit of field work for public safety, our rangers, and some of the obvious bits that remain where the city staff has to come in physically and do their job. There's a fair bit of this, though, behind the scenes that is, to a large extent, being able to be done virtually or telework. Logistics, that section is responsible for obtaining material, supplies. And also, we have put our rather large Emergency Services Volunteer Program, the ESP program, under that. So you're going to see all sorts of activity and support going on to the logistics. The Planning and Intelligence Section is a very big effort. Some of the names are being updated, but you're going to see Michelle Flaherty and Rachel Tanner and others involved in that. You'll note that we have a Legislative Affairs function in there. And for the council's benefit, we have established a recovery branch with John Lake adding that up. So those are, essentially, the planning function is a little bit different than the City Planning Department, although there is some overlap. We're looking ahead to the future about what the city should be doing. As I'll talk about in a few moments, a lot of what we're doing is working with stakeholders. So some of that is done within the EOC and some of that's done within the Citizen Core Council. Appropriately enough, the green color is our financial and administrative section. Much of what we're doing, we hope to be able to at least apply for, if not succeed, in being reimbursed. So there's a fair bit of administrivia that is requisite to comply with FEMA and CAL, State OES, requirements as well. And then obviously, as the City Manager is going to talk about in more depth, we have our role as a city and our role as an employer as well. And that is the purview of the Personnel Section. So that's a little bit of an overview of the structure. I won't belabor this anymore except to say that this supports our three primary objectives. The first of which is to maintain constant situational awareness of an evolving and frankly difficult topic, public health, emergency, and pandemic. Secondly, to efficiently muster all of the resources that are part of the city itself and those of our stakeholders. And thirdly, as I alluded to, to look ahead towards post-disaster timing, where we effort a recovery, some of that'll be financial and some of that'll be city operations. So with that, I will turn it back to Mr. Shakata and I'll be here for further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Just really to provide a color commentary on this, literally, the names on the org chart will be very familiar to the City Council. And that's because all of these folks have day jobs, effectively. If you look at, just starting with the colored boxes, Kevin McNally, Deputy Chief in the Fire Department, Nate Rainey is part of our Office of Emergency Services, Charlie Cullen, normally Communications Manager in the Police Department, Planning and Intelligence, Michelle Pushe Flaherty, who's our Deputy City Manager, Rachel Tanner, Assistant Director in Planning Department, Finance Administration, David Ramberg, who's the Deputy Director in Administrative Services Department, and Rumi Portillo, you all know as our Chief People Officer. So effectively, this is a second organization that we are currently running, parallel to the city, traditional city structure of the city departments, which are continuing to do their work. But really important that the council and the community understand that the second, the second jobs effectively that everyone on this org chart has taken on, or certainly not eight-to-five jobs, these are in effect 24/7 jobs. So as we talk, as we will after the presentation, about the capacity that exists within the organization, I do think it's really important to understand that in order to both effectively manage through a state of emergency as well as to ensure that we're positioning the city appropriately in order to maximize our opportunities to seek relief, financial relief, post-emergency from FEMA as well as any other sources that might be opportunities for us to obtain some reimbursement. It's really critical that we use this structure and all these folks have taken on these additional duties in order to ensure that the city is appropriately positioned, both for today as well as for the future. So with that, let me turn it back to Megan to walk us through the next piece of presentation.
Good evening. I'm having a difficult time with the PowerPoint. Sorry, hold on one sec. It's hard driving and doing all of this all at the same time. So I have the pleasure of talking a little bit about the city's effort during this emergency situation and discuss the full breadth of how we're engaged and partnered across a number of different sectors, including the business sector, our nonprofits, our healthcare leadership, and more. And so I have the opportunity over the next two slides to talk about that in a little bit. So we are fully engaged and partnering across, like I said, many sectors. We continue to partner and participate with the county. Obviously, they're leading this public health emergency and we participate in their briefings. And we also track advisories from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention and other guidance that they provide. We've activated our Citizen Core Council. And that council provides an opportunity for us to check in twice a week and more if possible, as needed, with Stanford Healthcare, our other hospitals, including Palo Alto Medical Foundation, with our school district, with Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce, and other local businesses as needed. And we evolve that group as needed to include other critical strategic partners to gain their updates as well. We've also activated our Emergency Services Volunteers, and they're actively out in our community, checking on our neighbors, knocking on doors, literally, passing out information that we've developed and created to make sure that those that may not be digitally connected are connected in the community and feel that they're supported and not alone. And we're actively recruiting for more volunteers. So if there's anyone interested in the community, we have a webpage dedicated to that that can provide more details. We've also activated our Community Support Call Center that continues to be a very successful opportunity to connect and answer questions from the community and share information targeted to what their concerns are, what their needs are. And we're leveraging those calls and those comments received there through all of our communications efforts. So for example, if there's a trend in a specific call question received, we not only answer that specific community member's question and connect them with information, we also update our frequently asked questions, we update our website, we share information digitally through our e-blasts and other ways to ensure that those types of trends were effectively informing the community about those specific questions that we've received. So definitely a very engaged and broad opportunity to support our community through this emergency. I wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the communications efforts that are underway. Many have seen our daily e-newsletter, and that's going out Monday through Friday with information. You know, the situation evolves so much on a daily basis. It's hard for even us to keep track of all the information. So putting out a newsletter each day to help the community understand what those new restrictions might be from the county, how that impacts them each day, that is really a great way so far. And we've heard a lot of support through the community that they are reading the newsletter and very much supportive of the information that we provide there. In addition to providing those important emergency updates, we're also trying to engage the community to be well, be healthy, stay engaged, have fun with their family, and so, and also connect businesses with resources. So those are three or four very strategic, important areas that we're focusing on each day. In addition, we have printed postcards, like I mentioned, that our volunteers are passing out in the community, especially for those members of our community that are not connected digitally. We've also partnered with our local newspapers to advertise and encourage our local community to shop and eat local. And we have a dedicated webpage specific to that that helps to connect our community with resources and know where they can go to shop and get food and also where, what takeout opportunities are available to them. We also have a number of other dedicated websites to help inform. And one of those is very specific to how community members can gain support and help they need and also ways that our community can provide help and volunteer. So that website's here on the screen. It's backslash Support Services. In addition, we recently revamped our Business Assistance Page. We're now calling it a Business Assistance Center. And it provides two separate, very important focus areas. One to support businesses through this process. We know that a number of forms that they have to fill out and other information that they might be interested in to help them through this challenging situation can be super cumbersome. So we've provided a one-stop portal for them to get information about state resources, federal resources, and local resources. In addition, there's a whole sub-page dedicated to employees that are working within those businesses. And so there's a whole page dedicated specifically to employees, what they should know about local support, state support, and federal support, and other opportunities there. So we're definitely evolving those pages as we go, trying to respond to community input as well as council and other input on a daily basis, if not hourly basis. So at this time, I'd like to invite Rumi Portillo, the Director of Human Resources, to now take over the next couple of slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you. Rumi Portillo, Human Resources Director. The shelter-in-place order took effect in March 17th. And so we readied the workforce for three weeks of working off-site to the extent possible. In order to meet the requirement or the goal of reducing the number of people in the worksite, we did deploy about 400 employees to telework on very short notice. And many had not worked at an off-site location before. So it was an incredible strain to our IT department and others. And they really pulled through. It's been a very successful and productive exercise for us to go through. And we're well situated to go through the next few weeks and longer with the telework in place. About 600 of our employees, including first responders, public works, utilities, and parks maintenance, a cross-section of the city, continue to report to work every day or on a rotational basis because much of the work that we perform has to be done in person. So with this balance of about 600, including part-time employees, and then 400 of the telework employees, we were able to keep the majority of our workforce and a good 90%, 90% of our workforce working and fully productive during that time. There's a small number of employees who initially were assisting with the transition during the shelter-in-place. There were a lot of things that needed to be buttoned up and prepared for the shutdown. But as we moved into the second and third, and now going into the third week of the shelter-in-place, we saw more employees kind of shifting off of the work that they had been doing in some areas or combining their schedules so that they could have rotations to minimize the people reporting to work. In order to keep employees whole and to minimize disruption to the workplace, the city manager used his discretion that is provided under the city's merit rules to provide paid administrative leave for those who were unable to work. There was a combination of reasons why people couldn't work. We actually did have some workplace exposure to coronavirus. We had some people on quarantine. We did have some people who became symptomatic. But luckily, at this point, all of our employees who have had to test have cleared and are negative. But we did experience some quarantine periods. And so the paid administrative leave that the city manager authorized was applied in those cases and served as a safety net. Also, for those employees who are unable to work on such short notice, we do have obligations to go through, meet and confer, and to engage with our bargaining groups. And given the time period that we were working under, we just did our best to get through this period and adjust. And so the paid administrative leave was an effective tool to help us get through that time. This has been a period of great anxiety for our workforce. It's not only all the changes in the ways that we're doing our work, but we also had the closure of the schools and so many of our employees were dealing with the transition of having children homeschooled or online school or loss of daycare centers and relatives and grandparents who would otherwise assist with childcare. So we also had a lot of disruption in the households because in some cases, you know, spouse, a spouse or a significant other had dramatic impacts to their workload and demands as well. So our employees have had a lot going on and continuing to provide the services and perform the work to their best abilities. Now that, and we'll move on to the next slide. Now that the shelter-in-place order has been extended, we're moving into another phase of adjustment. And so what has happened effective April 1st is the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. It's the FFCRA has been enacted. It's designed to provide relief for those who are affected by the virus either through becoming ill or quarantining, as I had mentioned earlier, that we covered under our paid administrative leave. The federal act provides this for those employees who are not covered by paid administrative leave or other pay policies with their employers. The FFCRA, also the federal act, provides The FF-CRA, also the federal act, provides assistance to, for families who are unable to work or parents who can't work because they are having to handle the childcare. And so the federal act is designed to provide partial pay, and it only addresses the, the pay up to two-thirds of a, of the regular wage, but it also has a cap on it. And it doesn't adjust regionally. And so what we're finding is that the amount that is capped here will, is likely to prove to be a hardship for employees if that's the only leave policy available to them. It does cap at about $1,000 a week, so roughly $25 an hour is the maximum amount under the federal act. If an employee does, so in moving to this next phase with the shelter-in-place, without a paid administrative leave policy in effect, the way that this would work is that employees who do not have work because their facilities are closed, such as our library's community center and/or shut down as many of our maintenance and field operations are, then employees would then move to using their leave banks. And then, once the leave banks are out, they would move on to essentially a furlough status where they would not be drawing pay. And then, at that point, the health coverage would be discontinued. So that's the typical process that an employee works through when they are going through an individual circumstances or burning through leave. And what we would have is a large portion of our workforce, then as the, as the closure period moves along, would be going through that, that process. The, if the paid administrative leave or some other method were, or, or benefit were to be extended, that would take council action as the city manager on his own does not have the authority to, for example, continue health coverage for employees. The, the the, the difficulty that we have with this type of emergency where we're in really compacted timeframes in making decisions and that there's uncertainty is that we, although under a, a local and state and federal emergency orders, we have the ability as an employer to make decisions and to continue certain practices and discontinue other practices. Though, there, there are obligations to meet and confer. There are obligations to have due process on certain things, such as, you know, reducing hours. What we are need, outdoing at this time is providing notice where we can to the bargaining groups. And then we are, then as soon as we can, going through all the statutory requirements on a parallel track. Ordinarily, what would happen is we would engage, have discussions, interact, and work out any concerns or issues before policy changes are made. But the time just has not afforded us. So, but I did want to flag that as, and, as a concern. Next slide, please. I've been in pretty, I have a, a pretty strong network of other HR professionals in other agencies and cities across the state. And we have remained in communication and keeping an eye on best practices and how the different agencies are handling the workforce and pay policies and benefits. And what we're finding is that there is not a consistent approach. Cities are in different places in terms of what they're anticipating for fiscal impacts. They have different cultures in terms of how they address the workforce. And so we are seeing practices where, in some agencies, their primary goal is to get through this emergency period and to try to, to keep employees as whole and as safe as possible, which translates to trying to keep from affecting their pay. So some cities have adopted a whole-person pay policies, and others have already had to move down a layoff path. Others have temporarily furloughed and waiting to see how long this is going to go and what pay strategy, what fiscal strategies are going to be in place. So there are a lot of different models out there. And so they, it really is, you know, a call of council in terms of how to approach and, and what kinds of strategies to take. So the keep-whole approach is one where the paid administrative leave would be continued. And that would cover basically trying to keep people at the level at which they were hired and operated before the emergency. So that is one model. There's other suggestions and ways to try to minimize the impact and disruption. And we've laid some of those out here under option B. One thing that I should mention is that the Federal Leave Act does have the option to exempt emergency responders. And the reason why that provision is there is to allow the employer to maintain the staffing levels that they need. It would be too difficult in the middle of a pandemic to allow emergency responders to take extensive leaves. So, so what that means is that if an emergency responder experiences an incident with exposure and has to be quarantined or becomes symptomatic and has to take time off to test, they would then be drawing on their personal sick leave. Workers' compensation does not cover exposure. It only covers at the point that an employee becomes ill. And so the, the emergency responders are, do not have a buffer. We have, where that would come into play would be employees who are new and haven't built a bank. There would be other employees who may have had extended absences either because of, often when there's a maternity leave or a new child, they would have used their leaves. In other cases, we have employees who have had serious illnesses and have had to use their time. And so in instances like that, we would have employees at risk of having unpaid time. And then again, that unpaid time puts them at risk for losing their health coverage. So the additional sick leave is one that we're finding almost universal in, at least in, in the cities that have been reporting in as being something that the councils have been acting on. Paid administrative leave for essential workers. What that means there is that, for example, on public works, we might have a crew of five people who typically, or four people who go out on a, on a daily basis to perform operations during this emergency in order to minimize the amount of people having to, to report to the work site and to be out in the field. We have adjusted the scope of work and tailor, and trimmed it down as much as possible. And what we might see is we would have two members of the crew coming in one week and then switching with the other two to the next week. What that would mean then is they would only be earning half their salary. And then, in that case, they would also lose their eligibility for their, their healthcare. And so the, the idea there is that if there were paid, paid administrative leave available to those workers, they would be able to maintain their status. So we are seeing some practices out there where paid leave is being used in combination with work in order to keep people whole. There's another way of dealing with another segment of the workforce. We do have non-essential employees, meaning that they're not needing to physically report to work. But they may have work that isn't suitable for telework, either because they use equipment in the office or they do a type of work that requires access to systems or that type of thing that is not practical to carry home. In those cases, those employees would simply go without pay unless there was some, some other way of, of policy of, or practice of dealing with that. There are, there, we typically do not assign people work outside of their job class, but under an emergency like this, there would be an option to reassign either across the, to a different division, department, or an entirely different type of work that needs to get done. And that would allow an employee to continue to, to have income. The other model we've seen out with other agencies and, and some, something for consideration is that with the reduced benefit with the childcare leave, what we would have there is, is the potential for employees to supplement that $25 an hour that I mentioned. They could stack their leave on top of that. So if they do have a bank of leaves, they could use that concurrently with the federal act so that they are earning up to full pay. And they would be able to then cover their expenses and, and, and other ways of, of stabilizing their household and family. So those, those four areas that I talked about are places where we have, we would have gaps all as a result of this, this health emergency. As I mentioned, we have quite a bit of anxiety with the workforce. We are on the administrative leave practice right now to close out the pay period. And so the pay period ends on April 10th. Without further authority, then we would move into, effective with the, the next pay period on April 11th, we would be moving into reduced hours or no hours and then change the status for employees. So that is my report on the workforce and the impacts to pay and some of the options that are available. Now, this, this evening is a report out and an update as to where we are with the workforce. But we, in order to, to actually have, to have action on this, we, we would be required to return, and that would require direction. So that is my report, and I'm available for questions as we go through the evening. Thank you.
All right, let's move to Kylie, speaking to our fiscal analysis at this point.
Thanks, Ed, and good evening, City Council. As Ed mentioned on this slide, we have the high-level estimates for the preliminary financial impacts associated with. So as we've been saying, first and foremost, this is a health crisis, and our primary goals right now are to limit the spread and contain the virus. But there's no doubt that we've all seen the news articles, the market, and therefore the implications on our personal finances here for the, this community of Palo Alto that have been very stark and very immediate. As downtown is basically empty, our daytime population has dropped as everyone is sheltering in place, working from home. So in order to help steer this conversation, staff has moved it into two tracks. The immediate track, which is the emergency response and this kind of period where the community and society is frankly sheltered in place, where only essential businesses are functioning. Right now, focusing obviously on the fiscal year 2020 impacts in that bucket. The second track is looking at the return or the recovery period, which we're right now assuming is FY 2021 and beyond. So really looking at, ideally, hopefully, we will not be in a shelter-in-place by that point in time. And what does that new normal look like as we move and reimagine the services and what our organization looks like? And ultimately, frankly, what the shared sacrifices will be as we develop what that new normal is. So preliminary for FY 2020, and obviously, these are extraordinarily caveated numbers. We estimate that the impact in FY 2020 is about $15 to $20 million in the city's general fund. Now, that's a combination of expected losses and taxes of about $15 million as well as about $8 million or more in program revenue reductions. Just to kind of provide some color for those two things, our primarily hit sources on the tax side are TOT and sales tax. On the TOT front, a number of hotels have actually closed and therefore have an occupancy level of zero. Those hotels that remain open, we are hearing reports that our occupancy levels are in the single digits. So overall, we're looking at lower than 10% occupancy levels. Prior to this, we were somewhere between in the 80% occupancy level range. So we're seeing a really big drop in TOT. And then on the sales tax front, we're expecting a drop in sales tax due to the closing of non-essential businesses. So we looked at restaurants, retail, and the like that are being more significantly impacted by the shelter-in-place and expecting a harsher impact from those over the course of this, the next few months. The program revenues are due to things such as rec programs that are no longer occurring or building permits that we're no longer issuing. So there's a number of services that we are no longer doing that are supported by fees, whether they're cost recovery fees or just class fees or sometimes, in certain instances, lease revenues. They're no longer activities that are going forward, and therefore the revenues aren't going to come in. But similar to what Rumi was just discussing, we still have the costs right now, at least, to operate those classes. So those revenue offsets, or those revenue losses are offset by immediate actions that we've been taking as we take, we're monitoring the situation. Immediately upon this emergency ordinance, we've instituted a hiring freeze. So we're making sure that our payroll is not growing during this period of time. And we're also expected to curb our contractual expenses as we move forward. Frankly, partially due to delays since we can't do some of the work that we normally would do at this point in time, but also staff is focusing on our central services and on the health emergency at hand. So that's FY 2020. As we move forward into 2021, obviously, we are going to have to work together to shape what our new normal is going to look. And really, as we move past the shelter-in-place, that's really where a lot of the questions come into play. We don't know how long the shelter-in-place will last. We don't know what it will look like as we move out of it. And so you'll see from other cities and from economists, there are a number of different theories. This could look like a disaster recovery. So if you look at a natural disaster where you, like a hurricane or a major earthquake, where there's a major dip in revenues and activities, and then a quick rebound. Or others are thinking this is going to turn into a multi-year recession. So frankly, we don't know. And neither frankly does anybody else. So we're monitoring the situation closely. But obviously, as we move into 2021, we are careful about the actions that we take. And that's really the conversation, I think, as Ed alluded to earlier, we'll have in the May and June timeframe, hopefully, as we know more information. But I think I just heard on the news today that they're moving our expected peak to not be in late April. It's moving now into a May timeframe. And so just in general, as this is an evolving situation, we don't know when the shelter-in-place will be lifted. We don't know what the next two months and three months look like, let alone what the next six months look like. One of the questions is always, how much do we have in reserves? We have healthy reserves here. Our budget stabilization reserve, when we were doing the analysis back for mid-year, which is very recent. which is very recent, February, right before COVID uh was felt by us here in Santa Clara County, was about forty-four and a half million. This is above our target. Our target is eighteen and a half. That forty-four point five million is nineteen point three percent. So we do have some um room within our reserve to help us balance. But obviously, staff will work both in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to do our best to not fully deplete our reserves, but obviously make measured um choices as we move through this extremely dynamic situation. Um, and I think with that, that's the end of fiscal, and I think I'm turning it over to Kristin O'Kane.
Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. Kristin O'Kane with Community Services. So I wanted to report on some of the work we've been doing with our nonprofit service providers. So we have been convening remote meetings twice a week with our local community-based organizations to really better understand the span of services being provided to Palo Alto's most vulnerable residents and to identify the additional needs that these organizations have and anticipate having for the next few months. The organizations that we're communicating with are those focused on essential human needs, such as food, healthcare, shelter, and housing. And we've also included our senior service providers like Avenida San La Camita in the conversations, as well as the Jewish Community Center. So there are several examples where nonprofits have assisted one another based on information received through this forum or have had the opportunity to share county-wide funding opportunities. And then other examples where the city has been able to step in and assist. Uh, the staff report summarizes many of the services that the nonprofits are providing, but I would like to recognize the extraordinary work that our partner community-based organizations are doing right now to ensure that all of our residents have the services they need during this difficult time. The work that they do is already difficult in a normal situation, and they're really being pushed to their limits right now. Um, one significant piece of information I'd like to share in that is in the staff report is related to Life Moves. So Life Move, Life Moves provides rental and utility bill assistance to residents. And they're reporting that while they would typically get one or two calls per month for rental assistance, they're now getting about fifty calls per day. And not all of these are legitimate, and they are phone screening and reviewing all those applications, but it really is a testament to, one, the work that they do, but also the need that's out there in the community. As of Friday, when we last spoke with Life Moves, they had twenty thousand dollars remaining in their fund for rental assistance. So they are looking for additional funding sources. We did recently, this past week, receive information that Palo Alto will receive an allocation of about three hundred thousand dollars of community development block run, block grant funds to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. Staff are waiting for clear guidance from HUD on how exactly these funds can be spent. We're expecting to receive that hopefully in the next week. And in the meantime, we're also keeping an eye out for other potential funding sources from the state and federal level and will continue to communicate with nonprofits moving forward. If we find that there continues to be a need for funding related to rental assistance, we will develop a proposal and we'll bring it back to council. The eviction moratorium will protect renters for a hundred and twenty days after the end of the state of emergency, giving them this time period to pay back rent without risk of eviction for non-payment. And it also gives staff time to really look at what the funding um situation is at the state and federal level and also the local level and be able to put together a proposal that can best serve um the residents in need. So that concludes my brief update on the nonprofit service providers, and I will then turn it over to Michelle Poche Flaherty. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Michelle Poche Flaherty, Deputy City Manager. Um, I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes summarizing some of the work that the city's been doing to try to support the business community uh in this time of crisis. As uh Megan described to you at the beginning of this PowerPoint presentation, we very quickly stood up that call center and established our website with a lot of new information and really converted a section of the website into an online business assistance center for information and referral. And I think it's important to underscore this. I won't repeat all of the details Megan gave you, but um one of, one of the most important roles we can play in city government is information and referral for the business community because so much of the assistance comes from the federal government and the state government. And so being able to get our small businesses connected with the local Small Business Development Center, excuse me, and uh helping them figure out where to get those SBA loans and what other kinds of information is available, connecting them with webinars on how to interpret these new laws that are, that are being issued every week and the mandates, as well as the resources that are available to them. So uh we don't have all of that expertise in-house, but the expertise is available to our community, and we're trying to connect people with the proper places to get that kind of assistance. We've also uh committed city resources to advertising, to promote our local businesses. We've been involved with the Chamber of Commerce and others uh as Ken Duker described to you through the CCC, which has been convening once, if not twice weekly, with the city manager in involving the Chamber of Commerce and others in those discussions to try to figure out what the business community needs and how we can help them. Um, one of the things we heard from the business community early on was concerns about the vulnerability of businesses uh during their shutdowns to uh perhaps looting or other increases in crime. So our police department has increased its patrols in the University Avenue area, the Cal Avenue area, around Town and Country, El Camino, and uh stood up the substation at the Stanford Shopping Mall. So all of those areas are getting extra attention from our police department on a daily basis. We've uh done what we can to uh reduce any places where we are the ones who charge fees, whether it's uh parking enforcement uh in the hourly parking in the commercial districts or uh collecting the fees for our downtown business district and our citywide business registry. Uh, we've put a hold on all of those, and we're looking into whether or not we can waive those altogether uh in this year during this difficult time for businesses. Our utility department has suspended all utility shut-offs for our commercial tenants or commercial clients and uh are have extended payment plans to try to ease uh any kind of a burden on them with respect to their business uh costs that relate to utility support. In our planning department, we uh quickly created a way to take online applications for anyone who was trying to comply with our new green building requirements for electrification. A lot of businesses uh had planned to bring their uh building plans in before our rules changed, and we didn't want them to get caught in the timing of all of that. So uh we created an online application process for them immediately, and we're in the process of developing an online application for all business uh conducted through the building uh development center. And uh we're hoping to get that out uh before the end of the month. Um, we, as you, as you've asked, we've looked into commercial evictions that the, you have an item on your agenda later today to take a look at the county ordinance and see if that meets our needs. We think it probably does, but our attorney's office has brought you uh options there as well. And in places where we can defer things like rent for the long-term leases at Coverly, we're doing that as well. So we've done as much as we can for each segment of the business community that each one of our departments touch. And we're also uh daily monitoring the decisions that are coming out of Sacramento and Washington, D.C. to see what kinds of grants and resources we might be able to obtain for the community of Palo Alto so that if we can be a pass-through for federal or state funding to provide additional assistance to businesses, that we're poised and ready to do that and to maximize that opportunity as those funds become available. Let me uh turn it back over to City Manager Shakata for uh the closing slides in our presentation.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, so let me just very quickly uh close out our presentation first by just reiterating the up angles or channels that, the right uh terminology here to uh stay informed. Uh, obviously, many of our residents are taking advantage of these uh information sources and uh really, again, at an unprecedented level, been able to uh have information available on a daily basis, and sometimes more often than that. Certainly, uh received uh compliments for our communication needs work in this area. And once again, what you've heard uh this evening just simply uh is a small slice of the organizational infrastructure that has been standing up and uh reassuring in order to uh provide the information needed to keep our residents informed and prepared uh for the next steps in this emergency we're all dealing with. Next slide, please. Then finally, let me just uh conclude with our own base messages that all of our efforts and the community messaging has uh around slowing the spread of this virus uh that we are all battling, saying homeless stay plus. Uh, and uh certainly important for all of us to continue to reiterate these messages, staying connected. Uh, we've uh of the examples through which uh residents and businesses can continue to to stay uh informed, connect, and remain uh uh the team ability to demonstrate the ability to act as a community through this emergency. And finally, a really important message uh that the stress level certainly uh throughout the community is palpable. And we recognize uh that our providing the information and resources that we have are an important part of ensuring that the community knows that they are informed and engaged uh in being able to control our own destiny as to uh the impact that we individually and collectively want to have on this emergency. Believe that the state is also uh led by example in all of these areas and uh uh look forward to the council's uh feedback and discussion. One slide, just a quick recap uh as you begin your discussion of the information that we provided on our next steps, we'll continue to maintain and providing our image uh essential city services uh both in public safety as well as our essential infrastructure uh and uh ensuring that our parks and open spaces uh are also uh contained and managed in a sustainable manner, uh continuing our communication both with the community-based organizations and our business community. And finally, uh that our next steps with respect to fiscal actions uh will really be gearing up over the next uh two to three months. And finally, I just want to remind the council that we do want to get your feedback on uh the leave policy issues uh this evening so that we can return to uh the council should it be uh your um direction next week uh for more specific actions. So with that, I'm just gonna turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. You all can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, okay, so I I do want to thank the city manager and all of staff for that presentation. Um, that's a lot of work encapsulated in a few slides over just a few weeks. Um, and really, you know, on behalf of all of us on council and the community, thank you for keeping us safe, um, for standing up so many communication and emergency functions in such a short time. You know, moving over four hundred employees to remote work is a very difficult task, and so kudos on that. Um, I I think just framing this a little bit, and we'll go to public comment in just a minute. Um, we're we're past kind of phase one, which was the emergency, you know, all hands on deck phase, trying to do everything we can. And while we certainly have to deal with a day-to-day emergency, a public health crisis in Santa Clara County and the state and the broader region, um, we're moving into kind of a medium-term uh approach where we have to begin taking some strategic actions on issues such as public safety, uh business support, uh workforce policy, and and budgeting, um, which we will get into tonight. Um, and so this is, you know, kind of a a first communication to people in Palo Alto, whether you live here, whether you work for the city or you run a business. Um, things are rapidly changing, uh, and we need to work as a team to figure out what that new normal is going to be. I think staff used that phrase uh in one of the slides. Um, this is a really big item tonight. Um, we've already taken up an hour, and I know there'll be much more discussion uh going forward. We probably do need to split it into a couple of different items. Um, and just my read kind of mirroring staff's presentation, there there are a few areas I'd love the council to focus on. Uh, but of course, any and all comments and questions are welcome. So they have those areas I kind of see as uh emergency response in public health, uh workforce issues, and what we do this budget year, the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, beginning in July. Um, and then another section kind of on business, local economics, and nonprofits, and how we want to approach that sector of our of our economy. Um, I'm sure there are more areas I'm missing, but those are kind of the big areas I saw. Uh, I want to go to the public, and then after that, we'll come back to council for a round of questions. And so are we ready with our public comment?
Fred, did you wish to speak on this item? Fred, did you wish to speak on this item? Darren, it won't unmute it.
Which one?
Fred. Fred, if you wish to speak, can you raise your hand? And Todd, if you wish to speak, can you raise your hand? No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Just a quick reminder, I just want to make sure we're getting all the public commenters who who do want to speak. Um, if you were dialing in, two things you may have to do. One is unmute your phone, actually, and the other is hit star nine. So if either of our participants are dialing in via phone, um, please be sure to take those steps. Um, if you want to speak up, uh, please raise your hand, or if if you're unmuted by the clerk, um, just speak up, and we'll we'll go. I see Mr. Kohler's hand is up.
And he took it down.
No public comment, then?
No public comment.
Okay, um, well, thank you to both our attendees for listening. Um, if we get more attendees later, or if either of you want to speak later in this item, um, we may take another section of of public comment, just to make sure we we've covered everything. Um, so with that, I want to return to council. I think it would behoove us to have one round of questions first, um, and then come back for a second round for each of us. And so uh what I'd like to do is start with Councilmember Cormac, then DuBois, and moving alphabetically. Uh, and for the next item, then we'll start with Councilmember Vice Mayor DuBois and move up the the chain that way. Um, just given the hour and kind of the difficulty of running this meeting, I would ask each of us to to keep our comments brief. Um, I'm not gonna uh enforce a strict time limit, but I will just jump in if I need to. So with that, uh, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Um, I have my stopwatch ready here in case you're gonna give us a four-minute thing. I'll just start it, so I'm paying some attention to the time. Um, good evening, hello to everyone. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know how many times we'll say thank you or in how many languages, but I think it's important to start with that. Um, I want to start with saying that I feel lucky to live in this county. Uh, while we may have started off, um, you know, with um some of the first cases of community transmission, I think the response of our county officials has been extraordinary. Um, and if you look at the study that they did that prompted the shelter in place order, I think we have a lot to be proud of. Um, and then I'll bring it right to the city. I I feel lucky to live in a city uh where we have an Office of Emergency Services. Um, I remember wondering as we went through, I'm like, those three people, like, huh, oh, this is interesting. Um, very few cities have that, and I think we can all see the benefit um this evening and in the past couple of weeks. Um, uh, I know that um, uh, I I want to start with, um, you know, the area that the um mayor gave to each of us. Um, somebody's. Hi, Beth. Um, I want to start with the communication effort, um, which has really been exemplary. Um, and I want to state that the reach is remarkable. Um, webpages, social media, blog, FAQs, daily email, connected with the call center. We have sixty-one thousand subscribers, and we have a forty-three percent open rate. Um, these are, these are unbelievable numbers, and I will tell you that they are, they are balanced not just by the numbers, but by the experience people who live here are having. Um, walking my dog around the neighborhood, um, I'm seeing people I haven't met before from a distance. Um, and I ask them all the time. And I ask them all the time. And yesterday, a family who moved here from New York a few years ago said how pleased they were to live here, how grateful they were to the city, and how well-informed they felt. That is consistent feedback. I have yet to ask someone about the newsletter and not have them already be receiving it. So in this time when we can't meet in person and we can't get close to people, I think the city has done an extraordinary job, and every single person on the communications team is to be commended. In terms of the business support that we've seen, prompt and comprehensive, that list is extensive. Extending the planning permits, deferring rent for coverly tenants. I think the team has done a really thoughtful job. The Business Assistance Center, if you guys haven't looked at it in the last 24 hours, please go look at it. It's excellent. It's very well organized, super thoughtful from a user standpoint. A few quick questions. I don't know how we're going to do this. Okay, so the 295K from the HUD, it sounds like we're going to get more guidance on that, so that's great. One question people have had is about the bike bridge. So I wonder if the city manager or someone else could address whether or not the bike bridge construction is still going. It hasn't been on the list of stopped or going, so.
It is not proceeding.
Okay, that makes sense. Just wanted to be sure. I noticed on page 17 of the staff report, there was additional funding is required for Hotel de zinc and Harton Home. Does staff have any sense of how much that might be?
Let me ask Kristin O'Keane to respond for staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. So Harton Home Collaborative is a seasonal shelter that normally closes the beginning of April, so they're extending for an additional month. And that would cost approximately $20,000 to $25,000 for them to do that. They have applied for an emerging needs grant and are also doing some fundraising. With respect to Hotel de zinc, we're still waiting for those numbers from the Opportunity Center to give us what that amount would be. They'd also applied for an emerging needs grant, but it wasn't for that specific project of theirs. So we're still working with Philip of the Opportunity Center to determine that.
Great. Thank you, Director O'Keane. Please keep us apprised in case, you know, there's more that we need to do for those emergencies. I'm glad we're still running our shuttle unlike some other bus service providers. And it looks like those routes are still appropriate for people who need to get to food and the pharmacy and medical appointments. So glad to see that. So then two, three questions. One is a budget question. What, so I understand we're supposed to be at $44 million at the end of the year with our BSR, but is it relevant to know what the current level of the BSR is? Is that helpful?
Polly, why don't you chime in on this?
Sure. It's basically the same. When we make a projection about the year-end, it's where we ended the prior year, our expected expenses over the course of this year, and then the projection for where you will begin the next fiscal year. Obviously, that 44 and a half doesn't take into consideration the most recent estimates of the $15 to $20 million difference or gap that we're expecting in 2020, but effectively, it would be the same number.
Okay, so there's no seasonal dip or anything that we expect at the end of fiscal year. Thanks. This next question will be for Ms. Portillo. It was a little hard to understand from the material. I'm sorry, I'm already over five minutes, Mayor. A little hard to understand from the at places memo. Are option A and B exclusive? And is option A more generous? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Option A is more generous. It keeps all employees whole. Option B has some instances where employees will draw on their leave balances. And if there are no leave balances, they would go into unpaid status.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. And then my final question is, I think, for the city manager, perhaps Chief Duker. How are our essential employees doing during this crisis, and what can we do to support them?
Well, I'll ask Chief Duker to take the first cut at it, but perhaps our police chief and fire chief may also want to weigh in.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Cormac. And the city clerk, can we resume my video if anybody wants to see that? Anyhow, so essential service workers, those of us in public safety, the uniformed services, and I'm going to also include the many people who are out there in public works and utilities and Community Services Division, including the Uniformed Rangers, who are really for today's event and this event that we're facing for the next few weeks or months in that same category. I'm going to speak from my perspective in the EOC structure and looking at operations, which is the operations section that I alluded to before. Right now, we're doing relatively well. We've had, as City Manager Chikata mentioned, we've had a few potential exposure cases. Obviously, we were dealing with, unfortunately, some medical calls, but right now, the wave has not yet crested over us. So I think it remains to be seen how resilient our organization will ultimately be with regard to first responders. But I have no indications right now that there are any major issues. I hope that answers the question. And I'll let maybe Chief Johnson go, and then Chief Blackshire if they're on the way.
Hi, good evening. And I apologize, I didn't realize I had a background on clay. I don't know how to work all this stuff very effectively yet. But to answer your question directly, I will say, first and foremost, we really, really do appreciate the support from the council. It has been phenomenal. You've been very, very supportive to us. Overall, we're doing really, really well, and we'll continue to knock on wood. We've been very proactive out there, especially in the business community. We've responded to approximately 1,200 directed patrols to make sure that this community stays safe. And we've been handling a lot of the work order complaints that have come in. But overall, we're staying healthy. And again, that's a really tribute to the city and the support we have. We have all the mechanisms in place to maintain a healthy workforce. And we put in several service delivery models to ensure our workforce is intact. So thank you for asking.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Fire Department. Thank you for asking about the condition of the essential workers in Palo Alto Fire Department. The condition there is good. The workers are really, you know, all considering their morale is good. They're really taking care of each other. They're taking good care of the citizens. As long as they have the support, which they've received and very thankful for that, but also the communication and knowing that because it's a moving target, we're paying attention to the detail, and we're taking all the changes into consideration in order to make the right decisions. As long as we can provide them with the appropriate protective equipment gear, which we're doing right now, and finding solutions and contingencies when stock is low, that keeps them competent and keeps them prepared. We're finding new ways to not only protect themselves, but also decontaminate their apparatus and other protective gear that they're having. So again, as long as we're able to continue to try and hit the moving target, communicate, the morale is good, and they're all coming to work. And I go by the stations, they're optimistic, and they're thankful. And they actually asked me, you know, how are we doing as an organization? And I said, we're doing good. We would be doing great if we had a plentiful amount of protective equipment. But the goal is that, you know, we have contingencies, we have plans, and we haven't run out. So I'm honestly confident that we're doing good, and I'm really proud of the leadership of Ed Chikata and the support from the council. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Chief Blackshire. And I know we didn't get to do a ribbon cutting at the new fire station, but I did get to drop off lunch, so that sort of counts, anyway.
And they're very appreciative of that. That was a very kind gesture.
It was a pleasure, and it was, again, Mayor Fine's idea and a gift from the entire council. I just want to end with, I know we've talked a little bit about the next year and shared sacrifice. And I just thought it'd be helpful to go pull out the operating budget adopted, starting at page 81. So for anyone in the community or my council member colleagues who haven't refreshed their memory about where our general fund revenue comes from and where we spend it, I think now is a good time to spend some quality time with that. And with that, ooh, 11 minutes, sorry. Done.
Oh, okay. There's a lot to cover here. Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Next up, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, hi. So I thought I understood we were going to go topic by topic and ask questions. So I guess maybe we'll do a couple of topics and then rotate. But so we had health and safety. So first of all, I too have heard a lot of good things about our updates online. I think they're really appreciated by the community. So thank you, everyone, for that. In the health and safety area, are we able to get testing for our police and fire staff? Are there any individuals that are on kind of a weekly testing at this point?
So let me just take a first cut at that response. The testing really is limited to symptomatic individuals, and we have been working with both County Public Health and through our own partners locally here at Stanford. So I wouldn't, trying to relate to the question, in terms of weekly testing, that is not part of our protocol, but we are confident that we can get testing when we need it.
Okay. I mean, do we, and can you talk a little bit, Ed, just about what the testing capacity is in Palo Alto currently? We're still, I see some cities like Hayward doing, starting testing. Do we have enough tests here?
Well, perhaps just to speak to the Hayward model, Hayward and I believe it's Fremont now have opened testing for the general public that does not require referral by a physician or a medical provider. That's a different model, and we have discussed that with County Public Health and really recognize that while the perhaps primary goal of the testing that they've established has been to increase the access to the testing, that that's really not tactically the focus here in Santa Clara County. And so as such, I really couldn't speak to the overall capacity other than to say that we have been very pleased with the cooperation we've had with our local medical providers when it's been necessary for us to get our first responders tested in response to any suspected exposure.
Okay. I mean, to Adrian's, Mayor's comments about, you know, we've kind of gone through that initial phase, and now we're in a kind of an interesting phase where we need to deal with emergencies, but we also need to think about longer-term planning. And it's hard to do both when you're working seven days a week. But I do think we should start to think, a lot of people are talking about, you know, are we going to go back to kind of some new phase where people are tested and go to work, you know, until vaccine or something comes out? And does the city have enough productive protective gear at this point? And is there a way for people to donate funds to the city for protective gear?
So on an ongoing basis, we are certainly able to manage our day-to-day needs, but it is, there is shortage. And so I think it's accurate to say that we have had to be pretty strategic in terms of how those, that equipment is distributed as well as continuing to seek additional sources for equipment. We have received, I think, reported at the prior council update donation through the Chinese-American community, and that was very well appreciated for masks to the fire department. And on an ongoing basis, there are needs that can certainly be supported through community donations. So we've done some of the organizing through our website. We're also working with our partners. And we'll continue to be sharing both the resources as well as the search with our partner agency. So perhaps either Chief Duker or others might want to chime in on that point as well.
Yeah, I think if there's a place, sorry, sorry, Ken, I'll let you go in a sec. But if we want more donations, like the Chinese community donation, it might be good to direct people there to a place if we haven't on the website or somewhere.
Thank you. We do have that on our community involvement and volunteer and donation page on our website, and certainly happy to promote that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'll just add, at this moment, we actually have no unmet needs. Typically, the city would put in a logistics request to the county EOC, the County Emergency Operations Center. So we've been able to improvise a fair bit. I'll give you one minor example. We here in OES, the Office of Emergency Services, were asked to help the fire department overcome some challenges with disposable gowns, smocks, if you will. And we actually improvised with some lightweight rain gear that is obviously something that can be washed and decontaminated and reused. In the news this morning, I happened to see that the Army is working on a, basically, ozone zapper, for lack of a better term, that would allow the reuse of N95 masks. So I think there, in addition to global supply chain and sourcing, there are some creative workarounds and even recycling that we're going to be the beneficiaries of pretty soon. Hope that helps.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. So let me switch to the workforce staff questions, and then maybe I'll stop there. We can come back to your budget and business community.
I'm sorry, real quick on the equipment, I did want to mention that we received a donation of of 3,000 gloves from the Palo Alto Unified School District. And we also received 2,000 surgical masks from our sister city in China. And although they weren't, you know, N95 masks for responders, and the gloves weren't necessarily medical gloves, but again, as Chief Duker said, we were able to get creative, and we were able to use those masks on the patients to protect the responders. And we're able to use those gloves to help clean and decontaminate the fire stations and apparatus instead of using the medical gloves. So again, using those masks and gloves helps us preserve the equipment for the first responders. So the donations have been very beneficial, and we've been able to adapt to the equipment we receive. So I just wanted to get that out there and give credit to them, because that's very, very appreciated and generous of them.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. That's really good to hear, actually. Okay, so on the workforce, I guess these are probably questions for Ed and Rumi. Just to be clear, you know, when you talk about a leave bank, does that mean people have to use up all of their types of leave, including vacation? Or is it just sick leave?
Would be all forms of leave, so vacation would be included.
Okay. And then it would be, I think, useful for council, maybe to see some kind of report on, like, how many people per department are able to work from home? You know, there's some stuff in the staff report that talks about people being reassigned for COVID-related activities, but it's really hard to tell how many are needed, or if anybody that wants to do it's able to do it. Can you shed some more kind of quantitative detail there?
Let's see, I don't have the estimates on my fingertips. The numbers do vary quite a bit. And in fact, there is not a clean distinction between or any individual, they're not full-time working COVID versus full-time working their typical job. Taking, for example, the call center, both the call takers as well as the research librarians that are backing up the ability to revise our FAQs and get information and the like. So it does vary quite a bit. Rumi, perhaps, I don't know if you want to take a we call it a guess, but we'll call it an estimate of our numbers there, because it has varied quite a bit, not only from department to department, but on a week-to-week basis.
It has. We have, for a full pay period, we have experience of about 130 full-time employees that have used some piece of the paid administrative leave. So what that means is that they have jobs that were not practical to perform. And so of those, they were not all on paid administratively for the full time. They were, you know, in some cases, they were doing other duties, and then those duties ran out and that type of thing. I, right now, we are in the process of going department by department and getting updates of the employee roster. And what I'm finding is that because of the extension of the order, we, the directors are in the process of we, the directors are in the process of looking through all the services that are being done now and the staffing available and so forth. And, and redesigning around this idea that we're gonna be in this for a little bit more. And so we should have those numbers by, if, if we were to return. Or we can follow up with that. It's such a moving target, and, and there's so many different combinations of work being done. But as Ed referred to, you know, an example of redeployment would be when we staffed the call center. We did pull employees from two different departments and provided training and had the phones staffed from off-site. And so that was one type of redeployment. We had considered other, one example I had talked about with Kristen. And I'm not sure if that came through, but drivers in order to make some deliveries. They were some ideas that she had for some of her staff that didn't have hours. So we, up to this point, there had been enough work in the departments to keep employees, whether they were essential or deployed to telework or reassigned to provide support because of the emergency response. You know, we really didn't have it, there was so much work available that we really didn't have many people without capacity.
Yeah, I mean, if, it sounds like we're gonna have to have an action item on this. I, I do think a breakdown in our report would be helpful. Can you also talk a little bit about what is the implication and difference between a layoff and a furlough? If we furlough somebody, can we bring him back on the job without going through an interview process? What are the other considerations? If we furlough them, are they eligible for unemployment?
So right now, the unemployment benefit has been expanded, and it's been expanded, I think, twice recently. One of the, one of the expansions they, that are, that's in place right now is that employees do not need to be separated from their employer. Employees who have suffered any kind of loss to salary because hours reduced or facilities closures and so forth can apply for unemployment. So that benefit is available. I'm trying to remember the rest of your question.
Really, the differences, like if we laid somebody off, would they, would they go join a new pension plan if they?
What I can say about layoffs is we actually have provisions in the union contracts and in our merit rules. And so there is a process that is predefined, and we go through looking at seniority. And there is, in some cases, bumping. So it's, it's quite a process. And the city had, did go through that in the past. But furloughs, I'm not aware that they're really defined. So we would need to figure out for this particular emergency, you know, how that would be deployed. And there is potentially, you know, a meet and confer component of that and some bargaining. What the, 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 in the terminology, what the difference is typically with a furlough is that the employee is still unemployed, and they are taking time off without pay or being unassigned for some period, but they have a job to come back to. With a layoff, we do have some pretty strict revision, conditions in the contracts where we have to provide a minimum of 30 days' notice in some cases. During an emergency, we can invoke shorter timeframes. But, you know, the idea is that you take a look at the workforce, scale down the work, determine which classifications are gonna have reductions. We go through looking at the seniority and some other factors, create a list, a layoff list, and those with the least amount of seniority get notices. And then we, there's typically a whole process where you try to have displaced workers find other work within your own organization, if that's possible at all. So it's quite an undertaking, but there is a lot of structure. And, and definitely some union interaction has already been done in terms of laying out the framework that, that would not be the case for the furloughs.
Okay, so two more quick questions. So during an emergency like this, what, what changes in terms of our contracts with employees? Are we able to do things differently because we're in an emergency?
The, the, during an emergency period, we can notice unions and tell them what business decisions we're making and enact them. And then the unions then can engage with us about their concerns. But it doesn't stop us from taking the actions that we need to take. Whereas in a non-emergency circumstance, we would go through a whole meet and confer process and get to mutual understanding before we actually change any rules.
Okay, that's useful to know. Thank you. And then the last question really is, as we look at medical options, I guess, are we expecting any adjustments because of coronavirus to things like COBRA, or would employees be eligible for the Affordable Care Act? Talking about that yet?
We don't have any notification about any changes on health plans or premium costs or changes in how the, the, you know, the, the severance period and so forth. By severance, I mean the severing of the health plan. We, the focus has really been on the leave policies from the federal government. And there may be some, some ideas in the works, but we have not received any official notification. And we contract with CalPERS for our health benefits, so it would be working, you know, through that system.
Yeah, so it'd be a statewide, probably, emergency program?
Yes, system-wide.
Okay, great. I'll stop there. I have questions about the budget and businesses, nonprofits, but if we do another round, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Yeah, we may, we may go around for a second round of questions as people's questions may trigger new ones. And then I also see we have five attendees, so maybe the end of our questions, we can ask for public comment again. With that, Councilmember Phil Seth.
There we go, okay. Ed, are, are you looking for a motion tonight relative to agendizing the, the, some of the workforce leave issues we're talking about?
Yes, ha- having some direction from the council would help us define what we come back to you with, say, next week.
Are you looking for something more sophisticated than let's just talk about it next week?
Yes, and perhaps Molly will chime in on this. But in order to provide adequate notice for the meeting and likely action, I think we'd like to get more specific indication of what we should come back with next week.
Yes, this is Molly. We can properly notice it, as, as Mr. City Manager said. We could also come back with a more open item, but that would then not allow you to take specific action because the action wouldn't have been noticed.
Right, and I would just chime in that part of the rationale for wanting to move this quickly is the recognition that we're currently in the end of the pay period. And as such, we'll need to provide guidance to staff as to how their time cards would need to be completed. And, you know, clearly with some implication as to what that means for pay.
So that's something that, so that we should, we should discuss that basically in real time here.
Ideally, yes, so that would allow us to come back next Monday, which would be the beginning of the next pay period.
Okay, I'll move that we agendize a discussion about workforce leave policy for next Monday.
And I would second that.
I guess I, this is, this is fairly new. Thank you very much for your at-place's memo, sort of trying to parse that in discussion now. So I guess my preference would be is, is leave of this, is give us as much latitude to think about it this week as practical. I think, you know, first of all, you know, as I was listening to it, I, I thought, you know, boy, we should try really hard to make sure nobody loses their healthcare. Okay, that should be, we should just not let that happen at this time. As for the rest of it, you know, I think you know, the, the pandemic's gonna affect all of us, and, you know, everybody in town is gonna take a haircut at some, at some level. And, you know, people that have their job and so forth are facing the same thing at their work and so forth. And I think that in general, the principle, a lot of the, you know, we share, we share, we all share the burden. And nobody, maybe nobody gets made whole, but also nobody, nobody takes the brunt of it themselves because it's, you know, we're self-insured. And that's about as sophisticated as I've thought so far.
Sorry, everyone, I just had to run off for a second. So Councilmember Phil Seth, did you make a motion?
I moved, I, I moved seconded by Councilmember Niss that we agendized a discussion about the workforce leave policy for next Monday.
Did you choose an option, or are you just trying to discuss the options?
I think we should, I think we should discuss the options.
Okay. Just one clarifying question on that for staff. I believe you mentioned that the admin leave runs out on April 10th, which is this Friday?
That's correct.
Okay, and so then, if we don't get to this item until Monday, are there, are there any gaps we need to think about then?
Let me ask Rumi to weigh in on that. There are some.
Actually, yeah, I may ask Kylie to help on this. Given the payroll processing, what I would say is here, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, here we go. What I would say is that with each day, the anxiety of the staff increases and does have impacts to their families and households. The, the idea of, of entering into a time of potentially not having health coverage and pay, you know, is, is something that is of increasing concern to the workforce. But we do understand that the, the, with the council meeting on the first Monday, we do have to process payroll. And there is time for time sheets to come in, and I'll have Kylie validate that. It, it would, it's just that the, to the workforce, it would just be an unknown.
Um, yes, Rumi's correct. From a processing payroll perspective, a Monday decision works from a technical perspective, so long as the ultimate plan that the council approves is not overly complex. And is something that we can implement within a reasonable number of business days. Meaning if we had a decision on Monday, we would need to be able to implement it basically by that Thursday, which we've already started to prepare for, but regardless. It's more the anxiety that Rumi mentioned in terms of employees and waiting for a direction and understanding of what happens in the coming weeks.
Okay, let's leave this for now. I'd just love to hear from the rest of my colleagues as we go around continuing. You know, do you agree with this, or do you want to do something more quickly? Councilmember Phil?
Yeah, I guess I was gonna ask a question of, you know, option A is we just keep paying everybody. And option B is sort of, we sort of start to get surgical and selective about how we do stuff. Given the timing, would it be a good idea to say, okay, let's use option A for the next pay period? And then let's discuss how we proceed, whether it's more of option A or, or it's option B or something like that at, at the next council meeting? Would, would that help at all, or?
Sorry. My, my sense is that, yes, that would provide some certainty moving into the next weeks and pay period in particular. Rumi, do you want to weigh in on that as well?
I mean, we're looking at a $20 million shortfall for this year and significant more next year, so. We need to be cognizant of that, too.
Yeah, so I, I'm trying to understand that that means that we would come back on Monday for action to extend the payroll as it would ordinarily be. So keeping employees whole for the one pay period. With, so then is the idea that we would be back the following week for the, the next pay period or through the shelter in place?
No, council will have the discussion on Monday, the 13th. But have, would decide to extend the admin leave for that pay period. But then have a full discussion and evaluate further data and give direction about what would happen after that with, with appropriate time to implement it.
Sure.
My understanding.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Kylie, I'm gonna ask Kylie again for processing because her staff is impacted. Is that doable for, for, on your side?
Yes, either option works.
Okay, I know we are in a round of questions, but let's go with this motion for the time being. And after, whether we, we vote on this or amend it and leave it or whatever, then we'll go back to our round of questions, which we'll continue with Councilmember Niss. But on this motion, the hands I saw were Councilmembers Koo, DuBois, and then Niss.
I haven't spoken to my second.
Okay, speak to your second, and then Councilmember Cormac.
And I can't see the screen at this point for some reason, but regardless. Eric, are you determined to hold off on this for another two weeks? Because I'd be comfortable supporting option A tonight for a variety of reasons.
Well, I think I, I want to make sure that we do this properly. I think if, if we're gonna have option A for many, many months, then, you know, we need to think seriously about that. If we think this is gonna be all over with in, you know, a, a month or two or something like that, then I think option A, A sounds great. But if we think it's gonna go on for an extended period of time, then I think we need to be, we need to be careful.
I would have said, I would have suggested it goes until the end of June, which is the end of the fiscal year. And if we need to weave this into the new budget, then I think that would be an appropriate way to do it. Let me say a little more about it, but because I looked at A and B pretty extensively. I could ask more questions about it, but I think that A is the sort of, you know, generosity and kindness and so forth begins at home. This is such an anxiety-ridden period for everyone. We've had extraordinary work output from our staff. In fact, I think they all must be like, you know, the genie that changes in the phone booth from one, from, you know, one job to another. It has to be really trying. And I think unless there's an extraordinary difference in the cost, it makes far more sense to me to choose A and go till the end of June. My second still holds, but if, if there's any appetite for that, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Niss. So next up, I see Councilmember Koo, then the Vice Mayor, then Councilmember Cormac.
So did Eric accept Councilmember, I mean, sorry, did Councilmember Phil Seth accept Councilmember Niss's suggestion? Because we have a motion on the table, and I, I thought I heard a friendly amendment ask, is that so?
You did, yes. Thank you.
Just trying to clarify.
So I didn't hear a specific word around a friendly amendment. Let's try to stick forward here a bit. Councilmember Niss, did you make a friendly amendment on choosing option A?
I, I think that could be called a friendly amendment. But I didn't, I said to Eric, you know, talking to this computer is a little unnerving. It's really surprising. So what I'm saying to Eric is if he is willing to go with that, I'd enthusiastically support it. I won't shoot him down on his motion, but I think that it's a far more definitive thing. We have so many other things on our plate. It seems that this would be an appropriate time to indicate that we can go through the end of June with those employees.
I'm sympathetic to that. Hey, hey, Ed, what's our total payroll in the general fund for, per month?
I will not give you that estimate. Kylie can't. I think we track it on a per pay period basis. Go ahead, Kylie.
I'm doing that math, give me one second.
I think also important to provide context that whatever that number is, the. Call it the variation based upon the options that we're talking about is, is a small fraction thereof.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we're looking at, you know, some percent, some small percentage of that. I'd just rather not vote on it till I know what the number is.
I'm not saying it's an extraordinary difference, I would argue forcefully for A.
It's a, this is a rough estimate, obviously, given our funding ratio of staff. It's probably somewhere in the six million ish range a month.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I was guessing too, because it's two thirds of 200 million, but then there's benefits in that. So, so six million a month, so, so a 10% change would be $600,000. So one month or two months would be $600,000. Okay, I'll support it.
Thanks, Eric.
I think that, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, so there's.
So that it's amended to, through the, option A through the end of June.
So it's the end of the fiscal year, I guess. Okay, thank you, Councilmembers Phil Seth and Niss. Next is Councilmember Koo.
You know, I'll support this as well. That's why I asked the question because I, I kind of agree that we do have to make a decision sooner than later in order to alleviate the anxiety and also to. Move forward with the payroll, so it's not going to be coming to the employees at a later time. My one question is, so the payroll period that is coming up, if I under, if I remember correctly, May 10th. Is the end of this period, so the next one starts May, I'm sorry, it's April 10th. And then the next one starts April 11th to what day?
It's a two week period, so it would start on the 11th of April and run through April 24th.
So would the June 30th date actually be in the middle of a payroll period?
Yes, it would.
So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, is it better to do it? At the end of the, do it so that it goes to the end of a payroll period rather than to the end of the fiscal year?
I think staff can bring that back as part of the action next Monday night and send the details for implementation.
Okay, then, then I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could just please update the motion to, I guess, select option A through the end of June and we'll figure out the exact date.
Thank you.
Next is Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, so the motion is to continue full pay through the end of June, but also agendaize this and bring it back for discussion. Is that right?
Yeah, we have to discuss it next week.
So just for clarification there, depending on the outcome tonight, we could make it a consent calendar item rather than for discussion.
That's correct. If, if the council makes this decision this evening, we would bring it back on consent and then you could. Talk more about in your budget planning process, you're obviously going to need to have a lot of these discussions for the next fiscal year, but you would be, we'd be able to conclude that question through June 30.
I thought we were talking about putting this in place through June 30, but starting the discussion next week about what would happen after June 30. And looking at those options in more detail. Was that not the intent, Eric?
I think what, what Molly just said is that we. If we continue with option A through June 30th, then that would provide adequate time to consider what we do in fiscal 2021 as part of the regular budget process. And given, assuming that there's time for that, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I guess I, I'd still, I mean, I'm supportive of the measure. Again, the kinds of questions I was asking, I think to understand like. What are the categories? How many people are we talking about? I'm looking at the slide that had option A, option B. Was, was option B actually to say to use all four of these? Methods, sick leaves, the paid admin leave, reassignment. Like if we say option A now, are you not going to reassign people who could be reassigned in the meantime?
We would continue that effort. So again, depending on the needs. Within that, what we call the broad category disaster service work, we'll continue to maximize our ability to redeploy staff. Rather than have them on admin leave. That may not apply for everyone. So while recognizing the variations that exist, that would continue to be our strategy.
Okay, so the main thing we would not do is have, I guess, people with less time that would not be made whole. We would do that through paid administrative leave. We wouldn't use this. The FF-CRA money, for example.
Correct.
I mean, is there a way we can leverage those funds?
Yeah, should we, should we be using that money?
Well, as, and Rumi will certainly want to chime in on this, but as the guidance becomes clearer. We will certainly try to maximize our ability to leverage that, but it's also recognizing. That there has been quite a bit of complexity to this date and as such, we're not really confident that we can count on it. As in terms of who it applies to and how the benefits layer on top of each other.
Yeah, Rumi can provide more on this, but the FF-CRA is not, is not a pool of funds. It's a set of rights. That the cities have, the organizations have to pay for. So I think what you're asking is, would we run those rights concurrently? So that we would satisfy those obligations at the same time that we were also meeting our full payroll. And I think we can do that, but Rumi is the expert at this point.
Okay, I, I mean. And the only hesitation I have is just putting all of this stuff into a budget, which seems like it's going to be a very. Complicated budget cycle. It would be a lot to discuss, so if this can come back as its own item. Sooner, I think that would be better, you know, even if we're planning for a post, post-June timeframe. Curious what, what the rest of the council has to say on this, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I, I think, as I understand it, and I'd love the maker and the seconder to confirm. This is choosing option A through the end of this fiscal year. And then in, for the fiscal year 21 budget, which we'll begin debating in a couple of weeks. We can figure out whatever we want to do there. Is that, is that correct?
Is that, I'm sorry, a question to staff or?
Question to, I guess.
Was that, was that to the, the motion makers or, or to staff?
To you, to you.
Well, I think it's, I think it's technically, it's probably up to the mayor and the city manager because you guys control the agenda. But if I understand what Tom said, it's that this is an issue of sufficient complexity. That maybe it's worth agendizing a separate discussion, a discussion separately of the budget process to go through this in some more detail. Even, even potentially before the budget process is complete with the whole council. I think that's what he asked.
Okay, so, so what do you want in your motion then? Because right now it actually. Right now it reflects the action that you, you took with the friendly amendment from Councilmember Niss. If you could restate your motion, I think that would be helpful.
So it's, well, actually, yes, it's changed. So it's, the motion at the moment is to adopt option A. Through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
That's correct. That's, I'm seconding that option.
Okay, let's put that on the board, please. Okay, thank you. And then Council, Vice Mayor DuBois has raised another issue of, should we agendaize this workforce administrative leave question separately? But there's no motion there yet.
Yeah, I, I personally would like to hear what the city manager thinks about that because. As, as Tom pointed out, I think the budget process can be very, very complicated and difficult because it's likely to show us, show a significant shortfall. Relative to our previous expectations for fiscal 21. And we've talked about the, we've talked about the budget stabilization reserve is at 19 and a half percent or something like that, it's $44 million. But assuming that the 15 to 20 million dollar shortfall in the general fund projected by staff actually does materialize. Then the budget stabilization reserve is going to be much, much lower than $44 million by the end, by the actual end of this year. And so we're going to be facing hard choices on this or some, some complicated choices. And so I guess I would put it back on the city manager. Do you see value, because you're going to have to come up with, you know, a plan for how we're going to, we're going to, you know. How we're, how we're going to make this all fit together. Do you see value in further agendizing a policy discussion with council? In addition to the, to the budget process of how, of how this would fit in?
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. Really appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this. I, I would go back to the way Kylie described how we're organizing the work, so to speak. Into the emergency period and then the post-emergency period, really that reflects the fiscal year budget. In the emergency period, the motion would basically allow us to proceed with the, the business of. Conducting and continuing these essential services. As we move into the post-emergency period, the discussion is essentially a pretty, we'll call it austere budget cycle. And the decisions and, or the discussion that leads to decisions that we anticipate beginning in earnest in the month of May. Would really be the essence of not only how we would need to propose a budget, but ultimately for the council. Discussion and decisions among what services might no longer be provided in this new fiscal year. So at the risk of, of sounding like I'm, I'm putting the question back to the council. The ability to have a discussion of what are the strategies for reducing the cost is part and parcel with a discussion of. The reduction in services that would be reflected in a reduction in cost. So really, then the last point I would put to the question is that recognizing. The maybe belabored point that I made earlier about the second job, that the key members of your staff have taken on. Through managing through this emergency period, that. Second job is really what constrains our ability to do the thoughtful work necessary to help the council make some decisions around. What services might be rolled back and what savings could be generated by that rollback. So it's really all to come back to the point of saying, we really see that as in the month of May. The effort we take on in more, a thoughtful and at the same time aggressive pace. In order to support the council's decisions in June for the fiscal year budget.
So if I understand what I think I just heard the city manager say. It's. It's going to take until the middle of May to really understand this stuff anyway. And so. There's limited value in agendizing a policy discussion on council in the month of April because there's just too many unknowns in. And, and given the, given the dual org chart here and the dual missions in parallel, that it's really going to take until May anyway. I think that's what I heard. Did I understand that right?
That is correct.
So, so I have no strong opinion on, on whether we should agendaize a separate discussion in advance of that. I'm inclined to defuse the city manager's question.
I prefer not to.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Thank you to my colleagues for getting this started. I am completely aligned with Councilmember Niss's. Choices and her reasoning for this and I would be, I. My support for this, I think, is going to include deleting that part in the middle with the two agendas. I think there are some extremely important things we will have to discuss in the next couple of months. I'm not sure that workforce leave policy is, is in the top. I'm not sure where it is in this. I think the, you know, the, the budget in terms of, excuse me, the. Services, et cetera. I think there are some overarching things that will. That will be equally, if not more important than this. I think one thing we haven't talked about. Is we think about how, if there is a second wave, how there might be at some point in the next year or so. The need to again shelter in place if that happens. That's, I think, an area for us to be thoughtful about with, with the leave policy and, and we haven't brought that up yet. So far, it's all been about dollars. So I will be supportive, but I, I would highly recommend that we delete the part that says to agendaize to the comma.
I think that's right. So I think. To, should read, seconded by Councilmember Niss to extend the paid administrative leave. Is that where you're going?
Yes, that, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes my comments on this motion.
And, and to the city manager's point, this is an emergency step to keep the government running for the next couple of months while we figure out what the long term looks like.
In as generous a fashion as we can. And again, we should be grateful that we have sufficient reserves in order to do this.
Correct.
Thank you all. Next, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so thank you for putting forward this motion. I, I wasn't clear Kylie, so what's the, what's the cost difference between B and A? Was it 600,000 or what? I, I wasn't clear on that.
Oops, Councilmember, I didn't provide a cost estimate difference between B and A.
Oh, okay, I thought there was an estimate that Eric asked for.
Yeah, yeah, that was, there's unofficial and then there was my estimate.
What was your estimate again? I wasn't clear.
I, I, I. My, my judgment is the order of magnitude between option B and option B might be somewhere in the neighborhood of, of a few hundred, several hundred thousand dollars. But again, you know, I could be off by an order of magnitude there.
So as I think about this, everyone's seen the article about unemployment's record high, 6 million, 6.6 million. Highest it's ever been in the history of the country, higher than the Great Recession. We've seen that the GDP of the country has dropped by. Or I guess the, the daily economic op is dropped by 29%, which is higher than the Great Depression. We have companies that have laid off a bunch of people already and not just restaurants and retail, but all companies. Even companies in our own city in Palo Alto. And I think everyone's talking about shared sacrifice and I think that's actually what we should think about. So. The, the part that I'm trying to understand, trying to get my head around is. So right now, I think Ed, you're forecasting a, a 15 to 20 million dollar shortfall this fiscal year, correct? And, and, and that can I assume that if we don't, if we do what we, what this motion says, that we basically drain. Roughly half of our, maybe up to half of our, our budget stabilization reserve. Is that the, is that basically how, how it happens? Or are you guys going to make the difference some other way? I, I wasn't clear because you mentioned there's going to be a 10, 15 to 21 dollar impact to this year's budget. But it wasn't clear to me. And you're not going to talk about changing anything else until, till May. So it wasn't clear to me, how do we make the ends meet? If there is this shortfall, which I believe there probably is one, given the hotels are, are largely vacant and people aren't selling homes anymore. So I imagine that's probably true. But how, where does the money come from? Is it really just all from our reserves?
Well, first, Councilmember, I think the important point to make is that that shortfall will exist irrespective of which choice the council makes tonight and next week. And so the real variation among the options is, again, a, a, a small fraction of the overall. So your points nonetheless well taken, that this is a period in which we're experiencing and the community is experiencing extraordinary economic harm. But such as it is, again, I wouldn't conflate that situation with the options being discussed on, in this motion.
So Ed, you're saying that option A and option B are basically roughly the same and so it doesn't matter which one we pick? Is that what you're saying? And so it doesn't matter which one we pick? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I wouldn't say it's, well, again, we've got variables that are both unknown and out of our control that will ultimately define the costs associated with each of these options. But that said, that, you know, again, we're, we're providing a couple of alternatives for the council to consider that reflect how the workforce should be treating both its own leave as well as the leave provided by the city.
I guess the part that makes me uncomfortable is we have, in our city, we have three constituencies. We have our employees, which we've largely been talking about tonight. We have our residents and we have our businesses. Those are the three groups of people that we have to take care of. And, and, you know, from our businesses, we could see our restaurants, our hotels, our retailers, all suffering big time. Like some people have closed shop, closed up shop completely, not going to come back. We've seen a lot of people lose their jobs, file for unemployment. So the, the business community has been hit immensely. Residents, I think you mentioned, or who mentioned that life moves has like, I don't know, fifty calls a day now for rental assistance, right? It's like, it's, maybe it's all, maybe it's not all real, but there's certainly a lot of people, a lot, lot of people that live here that have been impacted. And, and so, and, and at the same time, we have this budget that's shrinking, right? This amount of revenue we have is shrinking, is going from where, what it was to fifteen, twenty one dollars less. And, and in the spirit of shared sacrifice, what I think we have to think about is how do we help these other constituencies? So if we, if we move all of the, let's say we keep, keep the employee side steady state, which is basically what, what the motion on the floor is, keep it steady state. What happens in terms of trying to support our businesses? What happens to supporting our residents in our city? Do we not, do we, how, how is our capability to help these other constituencies? Because they're all so important to our, to us, right? So I, I guess, I guess for me, I'm, I'm more comfortable with this being agendaized for next week because that way you understand what trade offs we make. Right now Kylie's not even able to give us a number of what the cost difference is. We don't know what we're trading off because right in the good days, right, before all this COVID nineteen, we had enough money where we could pretty much say yes to everything. But what's happening here is that our budget is shrinking and we have less resources available. And we have bigger needs, right? We have bigger needs for more residents. We have people who need the rental assistance, people that need mortgage assistance, people that need food. We have businesses that are collapsing. And so if we make this decision in a vacuum, which it seems like we're doing, we're not balancing the other two constituencies that we're also responsible for. What I worry about is what resources do we have for the other groups that also need help in our city? And so for me, I think the motion was actually correct right earlier, which is to have it agendaized, let's have the numbers and let's see what we're going to be trading off because maybe this is the right decision. But if we don't know, by, by taking these, these resources away from the other two constituencies, what we're trading off, it's a very hard thing to do. It seemed like the numbers are really not, not existent right now because I think staff was prepared to have this, have this come back on Monday and I consent items fine, but let's have the numbers. Let's know what trade offs we're making by making this is, this decisions. I've talked to quite a few businesses and a lot of them are suffering. I mean, they're trying to pay their employees, they're, they're basically taking money out of pockets to keep things floating. And they could use this, they've asked, can we, can we delay or defer or even forgive utility payments, right? Can we do that and also do this? I don't know. People have been looking at, you know, what value you did and they're providing loans to residents and to businesses. Can they, can we offer that?
We just stay a little focused on this motion for the time being. There, there are a lot of issues up in the air. It is a big ball of spaghetti. We do have to segment stuff and try to address them item by item.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess for me, I, I, I think, given the number of unknowns that we have here, I think we should know what else we're trading off. And so I guess I'll, I'd like to ask Kylie or Ed here. So by doing this, because we don't know how much money it costs, right? Kylie's afraid to even venture a guess at this point. What, what, what is this? Like I'm trying to think, what doors does this close for us in terms of being able to do programs that would help other members of our community? Maybe we should be sponsoring life's moves, right? So more people, more residents don't get kicked out of the house, right? Maybe, maybe we should be thinking about, you know, more small, small business loans. But I, I guess it's, it's really, to me, it's kind of tough to make a decision like right, right now when we don't know the economic impact of doing this to our other constituencies. We're focused, we, and we spoke, spent almost all the time talking about our employees, which are very important. And they've, they've been made whole. And I think, we, I think we should have, we should know what's on the table before we make this decision. So I, I, I would like to see it back to where it was, which is before what council member Cormac said, which is to agenda, which is have a agenda and it could be a consent item. But that's where I am.
Is that an amendment?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll make an amendment.
Okay, so to the maker and the seconder, council member Tanaka is trying to amend your motion to agendaize a discussion of workforce leave policy options.
I, I don't really understand how you agendaize a discussion that ends up on consent. So I, I think we had a vote on this.
Yeah, I guess not, I'm not saying agenda is discussion, but to just have this so that we have, we know what numbers we're voting on next week. Right now, we don't know what numbers we're picking, we're even voting on. Staff can't tell us how much it's going to cost. They're not even willing to venture a guess. So how can we responsibly make a decision at this point?
Can I speak?
I'd like to see if, if council member Tanaka, if this is your amendment.
Oh, let me see.
I was just trying to parse that.
No, not to agendaize. I think, I think it's fine to be on consent calendar. Basically, it's to, is to, so we have, at least we know what numbers we're voting on. So we could vote on it on Monday. We know what numbers are, are.
Option though, right?
So, so you, so you want to include an analysis of the cost difference between option A and option B?
Essentially, yes. So we could responsibly make a decision.
Beth, want to comment on that?
Sure. Yes, I think that we can do an estimate of, we'll call it option A. I'm not sure that we can reliably give you a variation to go to option B. But that said, you know, I think it does provide a baseline for the council's decision.
Yeah, if that's something staff can do, I see, I see, I see that as reasonable.
Thank you.
Council member Niss, would you accept that?
I, I can't read the print on my screen, I'm sorry to say, and I'm not sure how to blow it up. So if you just tell me again what the final motion looks like.
So it's, it's your main motion along with council member Phil Seth.
Right.
And then amended to include an analysis of the cost difference between option A and B.
I think, I think what the city manager said was an analysis of the cost of option A.
That's fine, that's, that's good enough. I think to have, that, that's sufficient. And that would also earn my support for this as well.
Does that in any way dilute our option A being, being the vote we're taking?
No.
Okay, that is fine.
Okay, so the.
Should read the cost, you should read an analysis of the cost of option A.
Yep.
Sorry, council members, I, I'm not clear now. Are you, are you asking for an informational item to come back with some additional cost information? Or are you saying you would not make a decision tonight?
Hold on, everyone, hold on. So right now is that the motion is to endorse option A, which we now have to come back on next week's calendar. And then it will also include an analysis of the cost of that option.
Yeah.
Yes, that's exactly how we would structure it.
And this is on consent, correct?
That's not in the motion, but if you want it to be made on seconder, should do that.
Or the mayor and senior could decide that.
Sure, we can do that too.
Okay.
Looking to you, council member Phil Seth, is this reading okay?
Works for me.
Okay, so the amendment is incorporated into the motion. Council member Tanaka, back to you.
No, I had other, other things, but on this motion, that's it. But in terms of other things, I have, do you want me to go on my other things or should I, do I want to let people?
I, I mean, I, I'm the next speaker on this one. I think we're speaking to this motion. And I, I, I think the right course of action for us will be to discuss this motion. We can vote it in, then return to questions, which.
Okay.
This will be back. We can go for another round and we can also, you know.
I haven't, I haven't done my first round yet, but on this motion, that's all I had. But if you want me to go into. Do that too.
Let's stick with that. We'll stick with this, this topic for the moment. So, and then, then we'll come back to you for other areas, whether it's business support, you know, support of staff, things like that. Okay, so I think I'm the final speaker on this. I'll just be brief. I think this is the right option. As I look at options A and B, the big difference I see is that option B does not provide paid administrative leave for the non-essential workers. I think that's the, the big delta. And I think, given how quickly this crisis has come upon us and that we are approaching the end of the fiscal year and that we also do not know all the needs we will have for our non-essential workers going forward over the next two months, this is the prudent course of action. I'll be supporting this. Just a couple of items in terms of how our meeting is going. You know, we're way over time, but no worries, this is a big issue. What I'm going to recommend we do is we vote on this item and we can put that one aside. So we've addressed the, the workforce item as requested by staff and one of the big areas as highlighted in the, in the council presentation. Then I'm going to suggest we go on a five or 10 minute break. And then we will come back to continuing questions with council members Niss, Koo, Tanaka and myself. And I would encourage my colleagues to think about, are there other motions we want to make in terms of areas around public health, the twenty twenty one budget, business or nonprofit support, communications, et cetera. So that's just what I'm, what I'm thinking for the moment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I actually had another minute or two after that, if that's okay, if I could finish that and then we can go on break.
Sure, another, yeah, okay, we'll finish with your, with your questions and then we'll go on break.
Thank you.
Are you okay if we vote on this though, quickly?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you all for your indulgence. This is difficult running this stuff remotely. All right, if there are no further comments on this motion, let's vote on this motion. I'm just going to go alphabetically. Council member Cormac.
Yes.
Thank you. Council vice mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Council member Phil Seth.
Yes.
Council member Niss.
Yes.
Council member Koo.
Yes.
Council member Tanaka.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, council member Phil Seth, for getting that out. And now back to you for, to finish up your questions and after that, we will go on break.
Uh, thank you very much. And, and just real briefly, I wanted to chime in on some of the, some of the, the business piece that Michelle talked about a little bit. So I think probably council member Tanaka is going to, going to weigh in on this too. I did talk to a, a bunch of local businesses in the last week or two. And again, most, most non-food, food retail is closed. And the ones that are still open are practicing much greater levels of social distancing than before. Of the ones still open, grocery stores actually is the bright spot. They are open and actively hiring full-time tent and part-time people, right? One of the few. There are a few food and retail places, a few, few food places with sizable takeout businesses and a little bit of retail that still has everybody active, but almost everybody else is down fifty to ninety percent in terms of staff. And general outlook is all over the place, but a number of people said, well, we think we're okay for another month, but after another month, things start to get really dicey. That said, there is one significant change, I think, for, that's going to impact a lot of our local businesses, which is there is a piece of the federal stimulus act called the Paycheck Protection Program or PPP for short, which it looks to me like pretty much everybody I talked to has gone after this. And what it is, is it's an ultra low interest payroll loan, but it's up to eight weeks is forgivable if you hire people back or keep them on staff. And so if you are willing to do that, essentially it buys you a couple of months of payroll runway. And so it looked to me like pretty much everybody's looking at that, including people that said two weeks ago that they weren't, weren't really focused on SBA loans. They're all looking at this now. The, the issue here in town is the SBA is going to administer this through existing Small Business Administration banks and lenders, and they are scrambling. Most of them are not ready yet. I had one guy say that he went down to his bank on Friday to apply and they said, you know, come back next week or something like that. Although Silicon Valley Bank sent out an email earlier today that said that as of four o'clock this afternoon, they are beginning to process PPP applications. So hopefully that will materialize and I expect, I think we're probably going to see a lot of uptake on that and that will at least buy people a little bit of runway. Other things, what would help consistently rent relief? Most retail and restaurants, as far as I can tell, are, are having discussions with their landlords on rent relief with mixed results. I actually did ask a few about utilities and the, you know, sort of their responses. You know, it's not very much, every little bit helps, but you know, rent relief is, rent is sort of the big, the big first order problem. Okay, thanks very much.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to suggest we take a 10 minute break, so be back at eight forty. And just a quick request, if everybody could turn off their video and mute their mics. Since I can't find you all in chambers, eight forty promptly, please. Thanks all. Oh, like clockwork.
That's right. These meetings all start on time.
I had to run and get a slice of pizza from Howie's. Shop locally. So we are just waiting on Councilmember Phil Seth. Give him a minute or two. Okay, there we are. So the city council is going to reconvene at 8:42. Back for a round of questions. We've kind of moved into questions, comments, motions. So Councilmember Niss, you are next.
Okay, front and center. So first and foremost, I think you've all said it very well. Thank you to staff. Phenomenal presentation tonight. Very good for us, but also for the community. So I hope people will go on and watch it. That was beautifully done. So a couple of reflections tonight. We are in, it's certainly for anybody, the worst time I have seen as far as going forward, not knowing what's going to happen, not knowing where this will all go in the future. It is really a time, I think, of, for a lot of people, very high anxiety. For some people, they seem to be quite comfortable just settling in at home. I think though, as time goes by, people will get more uneasy about what's going to happen in the long term. So a couple of, there are actually three things I want to ask about and talk about. Our business community. I too, along with you, Eric, have spent a lot of time discussing what's going on in the downtown. We discovered it's everything from one restaurant that's keeping their employees employed until, until this is over and they begin again. Another, another downtown restaurant owner has decided to eliminate both of his restaurants, probably will not be back again. So as you know, there was, there were some tenuous situations even before we had this happen, and that has definitely exacerbated that. I think this will be a time when our businesses will need a lot of care and feeding from, from us as a council. That, that's how we function. Sales taxes, real estate taxes, you know, any, any kind of taxes. And I think I read today, it's close to 60% in taxes that supports our budget. It's, it's a rather enormous amount. So, and Eric, I know you've probably met with the, trying to see where you've got, there you are. I, I know that you have met with some of the big businesses as well. And I understand that, that tech is hurting as much as the small and medium businesses in our community. Tough times. Regarding what's available and how the hospitals are doing, I think maybe some of the rest of you have been involved. But I spent some time last week trying to locate supplies for two of the local hospitals. And we had some luck with that. But overall, and I, I hesitate to say this, but right at the moment, they seem to be comfortable with where they are. Doesn't mean that next week or the week after, or whenever this surge may arrive, that they won't be desperate for whatever it may be at that time. I have one question. Who is it who asked, or who contributed something about the raincoats that they were being, was it, which person spoke about raincoats that are being used as protective gear? Was that Ken? So Ken, could you say a little more about that? Because that's pretty fascinating. And does it actually work?
Sure. Actually, I'll, I'll turn it over to Chief Blackshire. What we did was respond to a need that his firefighters articulated to kind of stop using disposable PPE, personal protective equipment in that case. So Gio, if you're on, if you'd like to chime in, I'll stand by here.
It's interesting. You never know who's going to pop up and win.
There I am, trying to get that bright light out of your face. There we go. So yes, so I talked about having contingency plans for, you know, protective equipment that we're running low on. So technically, we would use the gowns primarily. And as we're running lower on gowns, we also have coveralls that we can use that are generally used for, for the droplet protection of protective equipment. And then we also considered using Level B hazmat suits, which are typically for hazardous material response, but it also protects the responders from the droplet component of exposure. And then another contingency is the raincoats because again, it protects us from the droplets and they can be decontaminated. We can wash those off and reuse them. But you know, we're going in a certain order that provides the most protection. So again, as we're running low, we need contingencies because we can't just say we don't have anything. What we're finding and getting creative with, with solutions that are appropriate to protect our responders.
And the reason I'm emphasizing that is because somebody out there is watching this and they're going to say, where did they get those raincoats? And there may be a run on raincoats by morning because people will find ways to protect themselves when, when they're out of the house. So was it just an everyday raincoat? Or is this something like a slicker or a southwestern? Was it that kind of thing?
I don't have the details on that, but we got that from another agency that found that as a solution. And I don't know the particular type. We have Brian Baggett, which is our battalion chief that runs the logistics sections of the fire departments, incident action plan, actually did the research and, and and found the appropriate raincoats that we could use for that capacity. I can get that information, but I don't have that on me right now.
I would appreciate having it and I'll, I'll bet lots of other people will too. More and more people are getting interested in how do you protect yourself now that we're wearing a mask and most people are wearing gloves to shop? You know, probably it'll be a big run on raincoats going into Trader Joe's, I'm guessing.
Yeah, a particular kind so everyone's not running out buying any raincoat or, you know, face or
Thank you.
Not a Donya raincoat, but we'll get.
And so this one, I'll go back to Ed. It might come back to you, Chief, but let me start with you, Ed. So let's go back to, somebody else asked about the testing. Was that you, Tom? Not your head? So I've actually been pretty interested in this. I, I'm fascinated by testing because the testing would be the kind of, of, would, would be that which would allow us to finally function effectively without, with, you know, without being honestly nervous and cautious most of the time when you're out of the house. So I know that Hayward not only is doing testing, but my sources tell me they're testing six days a week. Now again, they have to have a fever. There's no question. They will check them. Oakland is now going to open two sites and Fremont is opening a site. They're all out of our county, I realize. I would hope that we would look into this a little more. I, I find it troubling because that is the one, it's the one answer out there that we don't have yet. And when I look at the stats in the morning and the Merc, which you all do, I know, and you say, so little testing, so little testing. Then you look at, you look at South Korea or you look at Germany. Germany apparently is doing thousands of these every week. So Ed, would you address that? And you may want Jeff to come in on that as well.
Sure. Certainly, we've been in touch with the county, both county public health, as well as the county exec's office in order to understand what our situation is. And at the risk of perhaps mischaracterizing, let me just read my layperson's understanding of our situation, that in Alameda County, much of the push for cities to get involved with the testing reflected a, a real lack of understanding of the severity of the issue in that county. And contrary to that, I think this has been pointed out, we are really blessed that we've had the level of involvement and proactivity of the county health officer that we've had in order to really emphasize and communicate to the community at large that this is serious, it, it needs quick action. And as a result, I think that our county has responded to that. So the extent to which testing was necessary and a valuable community awareness tool really is, is a point that we are past, if I might be so bold as to make that statement. So as a result, the, the focus around the testing regimen is currently playing out in discussions with the county health officer has been that while the initiatives that have been undertaken in the East Bay have been useful for increasing the access to the testing, it really, within the context of what Santa Clara is focused on in terms of treatment and again, flattening the curve that doesn't have the same dynamic. And so the availability of the test is not the sole constraint in our collective within the county ability to maximize the flattening of the curve, since it's an entire supply chain issue of the test kits, the administration of the test, the processing of the tests, and, and everything that's associated with each step along the way. So on that basis, it has not come up as a likely effective strategy for individual cities such as ourselves to get into the testing business. So perhaps others, Ken Duker might want to chime in, but that's, that's my understanding of our circumstances at this point.
Well, I guess just to belabor it slightly though, maybe there isn't something that Dr. Cody has found works in our county. I don't know exactly. But the irony is that other, other nations have taken this up, do it readily and speedily. So I can't argue one way or the other in our county. That's not my specialty. That goes to Dr. Cody. But it is surprising that it's done very effectively in, in other countries.
If I could just add to Mr. Chicago's commentary, I think there is going to be a new increase in testing and that will be for the antibodies. So as we move away from whether people are infected or not as the figure of merit, right now, we're looking at hospitalizations, ICU beds, surge capacity and ventilators. But to your point, Councilmember Niss, the, the next big step for mass testing will be to see through, hopefully what will be a simple blood test, according to the current research, to see if people have antibodies and thereby are hopefully immune. So that's the next phase that we're looking for. That might occur as soon as the next two to three weeks from now.
I, I think that's a very encouraging test, having read a lot about it. But again, I guess there are many viewpoints when we're dealing with something that's this complicated and that we know so little about. So anyhow, but thank, thanks for what you're doing, Chief. We, we really appreciate it. One last thing with your indulgence, Mr. Mayor. Could, could I ask Kylie a couple of questions? Hey there Kylie?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sure she's standing by, but uh. Go ahead.
Let me start with you, Ed, because um, uh. I, I just, I want to talk a little about the philosophy behind how we're going to do budgeting this year. And, and um, this is not as much a question as it is, is a comment. Um, because as I said earlier, we're in such uncertain, uncertain times. There is such high anxiety. I hope we don't dive into the budget this year. Um, trying to set things apart and aside early on. But instead can come at this more gradually, maybe by the end of May, begin to look at something that we can um, deal with for next year. But I wouldn't put aside even the, we may even get to a temporary budget in June and have to go to. Have another discussion in September. I think this is going to be a very difficult year to plan any budgeting. In either April or even early May and, and have it um, definitive and have it hold. So that's a comment more than um, more than a question. But I think we're probably all going to have an opinion on this. Um, so I've gotten mine out early. So with that, uh, thanks, Adrian. Look forward to hearing from the next person.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Um, next is Councilmember Koo to be followed by Councilmember Tanaka.
Thank you. Um, so just like um, every, all the council members as well as the general public. Um, there's a lot of gratitude for what the city has been doing and for all the uh, frontline responders and workers. Employees, um, very thoughtful process and um, putting and implementing everything. Um, so thank you. A few questions here. I have, so I understand the county orders as construction, right? And I understand there's four construction sites that are uh, allowed and that fit into the essential services. Could you tell me which ones they are?
Uh, let's see, I do not have the specific addresses with me. John uh, Late may be able to chime in. Uh, but the uh, context, I think, Councilmember, as you're pointing out, is that these are um, residential projects that involve. Uh, level of affordable housing, uh, and as such, uh, fit within the new uh, guidance from the county.
Uh, it, it's just that it would be nice, uh, because then. People who live around here kind of knows that they're okay to go forward and then we don't get the calls on them and so forth. So. If we can know about that, then we can kind of um, ensure that, um, yes, Mayor.
Just jumping in, I've got the addresses in front of me. Um, most of them are mixed use developments along El Camino. So twenty seven fifty five El Camino. That is El Camino and Page Mill, the old VTA site. Four twenty five Page Mill. Um, twenty five fifteen El Camino, that's the former Olive Garden. And thirty eight seventy seven, which is the uh, site of the former Compadres um, restaurant.
Great, thank you so much. Um, and then for the, for the construction sites that are going to be closing down, uh, shutting down and just kind of preparing it so it's safe. Um, how long do they have to do that?
We have not.
Is there a deadline for them to finish? Or is it just free, clear?
The legal requirement is a reasonable amount of time.
Okay.
And we've notified the uh, the contractors or actually the applicants accordingly.
Okay, and then one of the questions that I get a lot. Even though uh, in the order, it does say that, you know, um, services to um, residents. Uh, are not essential. So one of them, the question is about gardening. Can we just make it loud and clear that whether it is allowed or not?
Let me ask Megan to be consistent in our uh, communication, how we've been phrasing that and we can repeat that as often as necessary.
Hi.
Hi. This is Megan Horgan Taylor. Um, yes, I can answer that question. We have posted um, on our website and through our A blast multiple times. That normal gardening and landscaping for upkeep is not allowed. But gardening or landscaping for safety purposes is allowed.
So I'll say the same thing then. It just, it just keeps coming back. Um, in terms of the budget, right? So um, I was wondering, when we come back, is it possible for the chart that you have? That we have things included in there as well, you know, um. Include the dollar amounts. So instead of only just the percentages, maybe we can have dollar amounts. So um, I. Then I can kind of have a better idea. You know, not, not just percentages because it doesn't tell me enough. And then. Also. Within the sales tax uh, column, would it be a, would you be able to break down into categories?
Hmm. Actually, I believe there may be a timing issue in our ability to, to get very granular um, with that information. But uh, let me ask Kylie what and when we might expect to have more specific information.
Um, Councilmember, can you clarify your question? Would you want the chart that's in the staff report um, by category? Or would you want current data by category?
Um. Repeat your question, please.
Um, so I think the initial ask was to add the dollars to the table. So in the staff report, there's the. Very colorful table of kind of how our tax revenues have done historically.
Right.
Um.
And it's all listed by percentages, right? But could you put on the side also the dollar amount on that?
Right, understood. And yes, we can add the dollar values to these. Uh, your follow-up question was that you wanted sales tax by category. Um, is that request for this historical data by category or as our city manager just referenced, current data by category?
Current data. If we can get two thousand nineteen, then that would be the most current if we, I mean. Yeah, well, that would be uh, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, right?
Sure. So we could provide you with our most recent information by category for sales tax. Um, however, obviously to um, our city manager's point, that will not include any implications of the most recent months. Uh, sales taxes on a, a very uh, retro basis.
I understand, understand. Um, also, um. In the next, when we're going through all this, would you be able to provide, you know, which revenue category have immediate impact? And which ones lag? Is that something that? You can tell and provide?
Um, sure. And, and that's actually partially what this chart is trying to articulate. Um, uh, you can take the um, Great Recession, that's boxed as an example of it. Um, the Great Recession, if you recall, the markets um, dropped in the fall of two thousand and eight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so you can kind of see in two thousand, the fiscal year two thousand and eight. Um, there's a little bit of a drop in documentary transfer tax, but two thousand nine, which would include the fall of two thousand eight. Because remember fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand nine would be July one of two thousand eight. Through June thirtieth of two thousand nine.
Mm-hmm.
You can see your most economically sensitive revenues drop immediately when that um, recession hit. So you can see TOT, sales tax and documentary transfer tax hit immediately. In um, fiscal year two thousand nine, property tax doesn't hit until two thousand ten and two thousand eleven. That's the tax that's going to lag.
Right.
Um, okay.
In any economic um, timeframe and implications. Uh, so obviously you can kind of. Uh, it's not always the same as you look through our periods. You can see the dot com has different um. Kind of drop rates um, during that recession. Um, but you can always see that there is going to be that lag between sales tax and transient uh, transient occupancy tax and property tax.
And, and you know, that period of sales tax between two thousand and eleven and two thousand fourteen is just kind of very, very different from the other years. Do you know the reason for that?
She doesn't know.
Con- considering two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen. I mean, in those years, I'm just surprised about how, how much more they were considered to two thousand fifteen to two thousand. Nineteen, I mean, two thousand eighteen, when the economy was actually doing pretty well.
Sure, um, but we have seen a leveling off of our sales tax um, as how people do business changes. Also, as our business makeup within the city of Palo Alto changes. Um, the different businesses are reporting different sales tax. Um, and so that kind of is just showing a shift, a recovery period. That's why you'll see those larger growths. Um, but you also are seeing. Um, changes in our business makeup as well.
Okay. Um. So I was on a call listening to League of Cities, California Cities. And they were talking about uh, pension. And it's kind of scary because they said that there's going to be about a fifty billion impact. And so I'm just hoping that um, we'll have more reports on that. Um, you know, how we're gonna balance that out if we ever can. And then in, on top of that, you know, I understand, you know, the regional and state revenues will be affected greatly. So you know, what is our measure B dollars going to look like? Um, so this is, you know, all within this crisis budgeting, right? Um, also, a council member Cormac mentioned something. Um, she used a different term. Mine is um, you know, as we're going through the budget process, there's also, I know there's the plan. If we're going to be recovering sooner, and then there's the plan if we're not going to recover sooner. But also if we recover sooner, will there, will you have a plan in there for a relapse return? What was the term you used, Councilmember uh, Cormac?
Um.
So.
Uh, I'm not sure. I think I talked about a recurrence of the virus potentially requiring an additional shelter in order.
Right, essentially that, you know, so a plan for just in case we have that reoccurrence again. Um, is that something that is being planned on?
Perhaps not planned on, but uh, certainly preparing for uh, within the context of our emergency uh, contingency planning.
Okay, so, and, and that's gonna be, will that be also reported in the budgets when we're going through it in May or whenever it's going to come forward to us?
You know, I think we'll, we'll, as April proceeds, uh, have a better sense of what assumptions we might. Uh, want to uh, test through sensitivity. Uh, again, you know, I think our, our ability to do um, uh. Fine green analysis and forecasting is going to be pretty limited. Uh, but we should be able to identify the major factors that we want to suggest the council take into account in, in the planning for the next uh, budget.
Okay, um, so um, you, somebody talked about life moves a lot. Thank you Kylie. Um, somebody talked about um, life moves. And um, so. What are we seeing our emergent needs to be?
Uh, that was Kristen O'Kane that mentioned.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
In the context of our uh, nonprofit partners that we've been keeping close tabs on. Uh, so certainly this area of rental assistance uh, for our residential tenants is one that has come up. And I think that the council received some communication reflecting support um, for recognition of that um, concern. Uh, so that's definitely one. There are um, a number of probably smaller scale requests uh, that have been identified. And uh, that are now uh, posted on our website. Uh, with respect to the community partners that are, are making requests uh, for donations uh, primarily. Uh, so there are a number of different areas that are covered there, but I think that this area of um, rental assistance is certainly one that has come up. Um, at a larger scale than the prior requests.
Um, so there's a lot of uh, community resources that have um, that have kind of come forward. And um, I think there is the group Palo Alto Community uh, Funds or Foundation. I'm sorry, I don't have the name in front of me. But could you give us an update on that? Because um. I have, they did submit an update to us and.
Yes, unfortunately, I don't have that handy, but to your point, uh, we do know that the community fund has, and I believe it's fund, has been uh, very active. And uh, just recently announced additional uh, assistance uh, that they're providing to organizations. So. Um, that's certainly a community resource uh, that will want to uh, you know, both support and publicize. As a, a channel through which uh, the greater community can get involved.
Yeah, please do. I mean, on their website, actually, they do have the application for the grants. And um, they do a lot of um, they do direct to families through life moves and uh, and other organizations. But they also support, you know, La Camita Ecumenical Hunger Program. There is also Healthcare Connections, I think Peninsula Healthcare Connections. There's Project We Hope, and then also like Ada's Cafe, Avenida's. The Childcare, Palo Alto Community's Childcare and uh, Downtown Streets Team. So they also have donations on, on their website in order for uh, people to donate towards it. And the great thing about this program is also that their funds, this funds, uh, this fund in particular that's coming in. For the COVID nineteen, it, they don't, it's a hundred percent donations going towards the efforts and none of it goes towards administration. So um, I hope we will put that onto the website. Um, another thing is. Um. I think Kristen already addressed some of the plans in terms of additional funding for Hotel D, the Sync and also for Hard and Home Collaborative. Um, did I hear it right? That there's already some plan with the two, two hundred ninety five thousand that they received.
Well, actually, that, that's an allocation uh, from Congress to the city. And so the question that ultimately we can come back with is uh, the strategy for how that should then be dispersed.
And then has there been any effort to go off to um, to uh, get funding through the money that Governor Newsom had allocated? Uh, I think it's a hundred million that is allocated toward homeless uh, funding. Was there effort that was um, made to try to get some of that money?
On that one in particular, I believe we're working primarily through the county of Santa Clara as the administering uh, entity here. Um, but we've had ongoing discussions with them as to how that might apply in Palo Alto. That's one, uh, perhaps Kristen, you may want to also um, uh, chime in with any additional information you have.
Sure. So you're correct. That is um, being handled through the county. So wherever we're. We're participating in collaborative calls with the county, but we're also connecting any of our nonprofits to. Um, resources that we find with, within the county. So we're monitoring that um, and connecting the appropriate partners together.
And uh, will that funding, it says homelessness, right? Um, will that also uh, be applicable to vehicle dwellers?
That I'm not sure.
Safe parking?
I'd have to look into that and, and let you know.
Please.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So given our timeframe, are we going to be operating as a finance committee of a whole? Is that something that you guys have discussed? Given we have such an emergency and then, you know, June is not far off.
From a staff perspective, we have not um, tried to redesign uh, the process, uh, but that's certainly the. Committee and council process, but that certainly is something that uh, we could dive more deeply into and uh, depending on the council's. Um, uh, direction, design within the timeframes that we've got um, anticipated.
Are you making a motion, Councilmember Koo?
No.
Okay. I think it's something we should talk about for sure.
Okay, um, yeah, I was just kind of wondering because I'm looking at it, time is short. And then, you know, we have so much to go through, you know, you and Kylie and everybody in um, in the budget department. So um, what is the most efficient way to do it? Um, and. When, I guess I'm also wondering, when do you expect, I guess, May? Guess, um. And like Councilmember Niss said, you know, I hope we have a good discussion on it rather than just the numbers coming through. Um, just a point uh, before I um, hand it back is that. Um, county had some really good, um, the county public health actually spoke about testing. And I think that I just want to say that, you know, the testing now that's going on, one, there's scarce. Testing kits, which is why they're not doing it for everybody. But also, um. I think when you test and you come back as. and you come back as negative, um, there is some sense of security at that point to go out and do things when it can be another reoccurrence. And so at this, eh, at this point, I think it's too young to be just um taking a test and finding out you're negative and you can go back out into a community and to work only to find out later on that uh it might be a false negative. In any case, um, I think it's better to be safe, to do it right. And it's all about community transmissions at this point, so uh every, every um avenue has to be taken in order to to nip it in the butt early, early on, so that we can get back to our, to uh getting back to reviving our community again. Uh, and then another note is also, um, you know, um Chief Blackshire mentioned droplets. One of the things that I've been learning in all of our uh Citizen Core Council and from County Public Health is that um, actually, this one was from uh Supervisor Joe Semidians uh Town Hall this weekend, where Dr. Adam from the Al Camino Hospital spoke and basically said that the mask that we're told to wear actually does not protect us, doesn't protect the wearer. It's actually protecting the people that are that are uh on the other side of the mask. So I, again, you know, I mean, this is about false sense of security, thinking that I have a mask so I can just go out and do whatever. Um, so I think that there's some caution that needs to be taken. Um, so um, that's it. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ku. Just um commenting on your last point about testing and and safety. Um, just a public service announcement, uh the presiding advice still is if you feel you may have the virus is to call your medical practitioner and be led in for a test. Um, Stanford and other facilities do have testing facilities uh set up, but they are uh prioritizing them for emergency and healthcare workers. And if you don't have a primary care physician, you can call Valley Connections at one eight 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 three three four one thousand, which will set you up in order to get a test if you need one. Um, next up is Councilmember Taka.
So I would also like to thank our medical professionals who are definitely on the front lines putting themselves at risk to um help those um affected by this. Um, and also all of the kind of low wage worker who are doing deliveries, staffing grocery stores, you know, keeping the central businesses uh alive. I think that's really uh amazing and really want to uh think about, you know, think about them as heroes um during this crisis. So, uh, I have a question for uh City Manager, which is, so I know right now we're not shitting off people's utilities. But what happens if someone doesn't pay the bill? So I I've had this discussion with lots of people and it's not really clear. So we know that you're not gonna show up to utilities, but if someone doesn't pay, do they accrue penalties? I assume they eventually have to pay. Is there interest? Does you ruin the credit rating by doing this? So I guess I'm, I wanted to know a little bit more because like um, you know, residential side, your bill might be five hundred to seven hundred dollars a month, depending on your size of house. On the business side, bills could be, you know, seven thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, fifteen, it could be really, really significant because the commercial rate's pretty high. So, what, what, what happens when someone doesn't pay their bill, their utility bill? I know the power doesn't go out, but what happens?
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, as you pointed out, um, perhaps the way to think about it in two terms or two ways, one is the residential and the other is the commercial. Uh, in terms of the commercial uh customers, um, we have existing programs now reestablished to uh enable uh payment plans that will occur over several months if the uh customer's not able to pay for, let's say, for the next couple of months. Uh, so that's an existing uh program that staff has um uh been working on uh as we speak. As it relates to uh the commercial customers, I I know that that was in the works and so I am not uh recalling exactly where we are on that, but I I believe, you know, we're trying to investigate the very same type of payment plan uh that does not incur penalties, basically allows a deferral of the payment of the utility expense itself. Uh, and uh perhaps, I don't know if Dean Ambassador's on uh line this evening. If he is, he could chime in, uh or perhaps Megan has more updated information than I have handy. But in e- either case, if we don't have it tonight, we'll get that information back to the council.
I I was uh looking at uh what our neighboring city, Mountain View, has done. So I'm not sure if my fellow council members are aware of this. But uh they had a meeting, I think about a week or so ago, where they uh started putting places some things to help those small businesses and residents in need. Um, two parts of the program that I thought were really interesting was, first of all, um, they're looking at providing financial assistance to small businesses in their city. Um, I think they dedicated like half a million dollars or something, something like that to their uh to that program. And the second thing they're doing is uh they have a utility bill relief program as well. And um, I thought both of them looked like a reasonable idea. I didn't look into great depth, but um it seemed like, given the amount of economic um, impact or catastrophe that we have right now in our community, that um it seems like this would be a good thing to look at and model and perhaps perhaps even enact. And so, um, I was just curious to know if if you guys have looked at this program in Mountain View and to get your thoughts around it.
Yes, uh, Councilmember, if you're speaking specifically to financial assistance, uh, you know, that's certainly um open for discussion. I think the uh question uh that we have is how to structure a program that is built around any particular goals that the council would like to uh pursue. And then how uh we uh as both uh city entity as well as, in particular, depending on how the program is designed, what role uh city staff would need uh to take in order to stand up a a program versus uh being able to use an existing uh partner that would handle administration. So Councilmember, you earlier made the point of the uh challenges that organizations, public and private, are having. And I would just note that uh any program that the city council order to uh uh direct that we pursue would rely on that same workforce uh that thankfully is now um provided some assurance based on the council's early reaction.
Yeah, so um, what I had in mind was that we take a look at Mountain View's model of Mountain View's program. So they actually had a partner with that program to help distribute the funds to small businesses. Uh, look at their utility relief program, um, use it as a template and then um, adapt it to how we see it here in our city. So it's made this similar, I I think their goals were very similar to our goals here or will be the same as our goals here, which is trying to make sure that some of these small businesses survive, will come back to our city, will open the doors in a expedient manner, um, that some of our residents aren't displaced, their credit rating is not totally ruined, that they're able to get some sort of buffer. Because I think right now, um, we're going through what could arguably be called a depression. I mean, we've, we have impacts larger than a depression. Um, I think it goes way past our Great Recession. And I think it's important that the government acts as a backstop to this kind of impact. So the motion I'd like to make is that um, we uh look at Mountain View's program, which provides financial assistance to small business and their utility relief relief program. And that uh we, that staff puts together a proposal based on that that we could consider to see whether it makes sense for our city. And I know that, talking to a lot of residents and businesses here, they really need it. There are people who are hurting big time and could really use this assistance. So I, I think, as we are trying to take our, take care of our employees, I think we shouldn't forget about our other constituents, our residents that live in our city and the small businesses that are collapsing, that are struggling all around us. So um, I was hoping that, I mean, I might be able to get a second from someone on this.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got two seconds.
So the motion, and and we'll have to write it out, is roughly to look at Mountain View's program of local business support and see how we would implement that in Palo Alto. Something Local business support, it has two parts, the local business support, right? And the second thing was utility bill relief. So so to go beyond the default program that we have and perhaps um, perhaps forgive, right? And so I think this has to be thought carefully because uh there's budget implications for sure. There's budget implications to both items. But the idea behind it is to um, there's a, there's a a current program that's already been approved by Mountain View last week. Yeah, trying to backstop the small businesses and then the residents in need in our city. And they have already identified partners for this. And I think it'd be great for us to look at that, model it, and try to get something going like that very quickly. I think they did it as emergency session, in fact.
So um, just, let's go through the motion first, and then I heard the Vice Mayor second it, to look at Mountain View's program for small business support and utility relief.
Yeah, utility bill relief. So so basically in the form of longer deferrals, right? So as long deferrals as possible and even forgiveness of utility bills. And this is for both residential and businesses.
And then create a proposal that could work for Palo Alto, is that?
Maybe, maybe you have a few different options that we could look at and discuss, and see what makes sense for our city.
Okay, and seconded by the Vice Mayor, correct? Okay, um, do you want to speak to your motion?
Sure, um, so I've, I've um, I've been trying to talk to as many businesses in our area as possible, just to kind of see if they're coming back. I know like, for instance, my, my daughter's favorite uh bubble tea shop that she goes to after school, they're closing down and they're not coming back. And there are a lot of people like that who are getting wiped out, I mean, totally wiped out financially, personally, okay, from this catastrophe, right? And um, these are businesses that serve our community, that pays taxes on our community. I think Councilmember Niss mentioned how sixty percent of of our revenue comes from these businesses. And so I want to make sure that they could come back in an expedient manner. And that, um, I I realize that utilities may be not the biggest thing they have to worry about, but for law businesses, ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars a month is not insignificant. Um, especially for the restaurants where they have pretty high bills. Yeah, and then our residents too, a lot of residents are really hurting. Um, I did a quick poll of, you know, who our residents are impacted by this and a lot of residents, there have been layoffs, you know, even from high flying startups, like, um, I think active trips or trips active, I forgot the exact name of it, but they laid off three hundred people here in Palo Alto. And there's a bunch, so it's not just the service workers, it's also tech workers that have been impacted. You know, Lime, which was a high flying unicorn, laid off like sixty, seventy percent of their staff. So people on all walks of life were being impacted and people need help. So I think this um, utility bill relief uh will really help people. While it's not gonna pay a mortgage or pay the rent, it's one small step towards that. And the um, the uh, the, so that, yeah, so the utility, there's no, there's no, so small business support and utility bill relief. Yeah, so I think, I think they have, they have it uh correct on there. Um, and so I think it's, I think it's critical for us to move quickly because people are making decisions now, are they gonna stay in this community or not, right? And they need the safety net that I think the city can provide. So I hope that we can move quickly on this. To have a program, and maybe not the biggest program, we can start something small, get it going, and it looks like it needs more, more firepower, firepower behind it. We could, we could also expand it. And I liked what Mountain View did was it got something done quickly, they got it done last week. And um, I'm hoping that we can do something quickly as well, so that um, people that are on the edge are willing to hang in there for a little bit longer before they they decide to pull the plug clearly on our city.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, just a couple housekeeping notes before I go to the Vice Mayor to speak to a second. Um, first of all, if you are not currently speaking, if you could please mute, we have a bunch of folks who are open, that'd be helpful. Um, second, quick time check, it's about nine thirty. Our entire meeting was scheduled to go till eight fifteen P M. I understand this is a big and complex item, just wanted to remind everybody of that. Um, and then on this motion that we have on the floor with a second, if you'll hit your little hand button, um, if you want to speak, I'll try to get you all in order. Um, so, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so I appreciate this motion. I've been thinking quite a bit about what we can do in this area. And a a lot of economists are saying that, you know, this, this is more similar to a medically induced coma. And it's not really a time for stimulus dollar, dollars, but really thinking about life support and what economic life support would mean for some of these small businesses. Um, so I agree, I think we need to figure out some quick aid. I think we need some more ideas. The Mountain View's example, example is interesting in that the city, I think, matched uh donations up to about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so they were at like seven fifty, eight hundred thousand, with half of that being private donations. And then I think Google came in and added another million dollars. So they, they got about two million dollars in funds for their small businesses. Um, with the city just kind of feeding it, uh seeding it with like four hundred thousand dollars. I do think they went a little fast and, you know, I I have been hearing that um, there have been some side effects they haven't been happy about, so I do think it'd be useful for us to think about a policy of where we expect these funds to go. I think just defaulting to kind of a first come, first served policy uh may not be the best thing. And for me, as I think about it, um, I think it'd be smart of us to help support uh small businesses. Um, support retailers, particularly those who generate sales tax. Um, and that we kind of get double bank for our buck there. And I also think we should consider how long a business has been in our community. You know, we have some very we have companies that have been here twenty years, thirty years, forty years. Um, and have contributed quite a lot. And if you go with first come, first served, we may get uh a new business that was actually failing before the virus came, you know, applying for funds, getting it. Uh, and so, you know, maybe we have to think about some prioritization as well. And so as staff thinks about this, to bring it back to us, I hope, I hope they'll think about those kinds of issues. You know, I do think focusing on a certain number of employees or less, you know, maybe fifty employees would make sense. The other thing I've heard, and you know, the Mountain View example of having private donors, I've been talking to some people who'd be interested in donating money to help support small business. They don't necessarily want it to just go to pay rent, um, if there's no rent adjustment. And so we may want to think about structuring our program to incentivize, incentivize rent reductions. So if the landlord reduces rent, the property may be eligible for more uh, more aid from the city fund. Um, something to think about and that. The other thing, you know, I am hearing that the SBA funds are getting approved very quickly, and so I think we need to understand you know, all the packages available to small business. I really want to see us do better at identifying the needs, um, figuring out how people can contribute. We have incredible resources of Palo Alto. I mean, we have people, we have owners of companies, we have companies themselves. We have a lot of people willing to volunteer. Uh, we have multiple billionaires in town. I do think people will step up if we put together the right kind of um proposal here. And do you think we should, we should get more information from our small companies? You know, I I too have been attending a lot of meetings. Uh, really, the voice of the small retailer hasn't been present in those meetings. Um, and I think we should get some answers, questions about is federal aid useful? You know, is your landlord offering you a rent holiday or a reduction of any type? Uh, do you have other fixed costs? You know, and and do you think you're, you're gonna stay in business uh after, after this is all over? And then, you know, ask them what they think would help the most. Um, the other thing that's coming up is property tax. I, I know, I've heard some talk that we may have a session with our lobbyists. I think that's a really good idea. I think we should all be thinking about things uh that we typically want to ask our state lobbyists, but you know, property taxes are gonna go down probably next year, uh but we may want to ask, maybe they get reassessed this year. And finally, you know, thinking about this motion, I do think it might be useful to have just an head honk committee focused on business. Um, I'd be willing to chair it or co-chair it. But I do think we need to get some focus in this area. And uh, so I'm really curious what the rest of my colleagues think about all this. I, I do think we shouldn't just blindly follow the Mountain View program. I do think we should look at it. Uh, but I think we should improve it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, so in terms of next speakers, I see myself, Councilmember Niss, Councilmember Cormac, Councilmember Ku. Um, just a quick note, I do see one of our public callers has raised their hand. I am going to try and get us through this first round of council member questions and comments. And then we will go back to the, to the, the public. Um, so please indulge us. And given that we're the Palatity Council, it may take a while, but we appreciate your patience. So, to this motion, um, I've been looking at the Mountain View uh initiatives that they passed, I think, last Friday. I think there's some I think there's some good in there. I think there will be some heartburn on this council and the community about putting forward public resources and dollars towards businesses. And so to the vice mayor's point, um we do need to prioritize them. Uh, small businesses, local retailers, things like that, that probably makes sense. In terms of the time here in the community, I'm not sure I agree with that. If I think about it, like there are businesses that have been here forever, Mediterranean Wraps, which I absolutely love, and there are new ones such as Orange, which I also love. Um, and so so time in this community is maybe not the best indicator to me, but but there's probably some number of thresholds that staff can look at to figure out how to prioritize uh these dollars. I think the donor match is a really good idea, and we really need to pursue that, whether it's with the community foundation uh of Palo Alto or or S V C F. Um, and I would also encourage us not to make it too complex. Um, if we go around asking, you know, like, what's your rent? Like, what's the kickback on your rent? What's the discount in this in this downturn? Um, I worry that we we end up falling into a bit of kind of the business registry problem that we've seen. Um, so let's not keep it too complex if we go forward with this. Um, I'm going to cut to the chase, and I have one, maybe two amendments to this. Um, so the first uh an amendment will offer is to direct the city manager to create a round table for businesses, nonprofits, and economic input. And that that's the language. I can send it to you, Beth, if you need. Um, I'll just do that right now. Um, the the thing here is, I I I think a- as the vice mayor mentioned, we've begun to hear from a number of cities which have initiated economic development strategies. And some of the feedback we're getting is that it's early, it's uncoordinated, and it's kind of become a first come, first served issue, which which I don't think is how we want to approach approach it in Palo Alto. At the same time, um you know, those of us on council are not really experts in local retail and how a grocer or a bar or a restaurant or or a jewelry store in Palo Alto operates, and what kind of support they need. And so I think it's really important for us in the medium term and the long term to stand up a group that is able to provide input to the city about how businesses function here and what the city can do to support them.
I would accept that amendment if you want.
Okay, thank you. I'll 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 get to that in a moment. Uh, I'm just speaking to it for the time being. Um, you know, it may be things such as process changes at the city. It may also be, you know, direct infusions of cash, which we may or may not do. Let's let's just be clear. Um, that said, I don't think we have the expertise on council to really support this. You know, at the beginning of the year, I highlighted uh two or three things I wanted to focus on this year, housing, transportation, and economic vitality. Um, my health times have changed, and and I think, and I wish we would have done more for this uh previously. That said, that's behind us, water under the bridge. Um, I think we need to make an accelerated effort towards getting business input to understand what's going on in the community and and what, as a city, we can do to support that. So that's my amendment.
This is a friendly amendment, I assume? Can I just ask? Why why lump nonprofits in there? That seems like a little bit of a different topic, or actually a very different topic.
I think it is, but like, I I'm not sure I want to go standing up. Like, we need to get input from nonprofits also about what we can do to support them in the community.
I do think our community staff does a pretty good job of that. I mean, I I would favor something really focused on business. It it just maybe if you have one forum, you're going to be wasting half of people's time, maybe one of the topics.
I think, Adrian, I think he's right on that.
Okay, okay, if you guys want to delete nonprofits, um go for it. Let's do it.
So sorry, I'd accept it. We could just include it.
Um, so yeah, it's essentially just um instructing the city manager to create a round table for business. Mr. Shikata, I guess we leave that up to you, and I'd love to hear your comments on what that would look like. Would it be helpful? Uh, can your team support it?
Um, let's see. Well, certainly helpful as um has been referenced. We're not experts in their business. And so getting uh the direct input would be helpful. Um, I think as I'm reading the amendment, this would be not a council-appointed task force or committee, but this is something that we can allow to be more nimble and uh ensure that we're able to make effective use of these uh business folks' time. Because uh that would certainly be important in order to get uh high ca- high um quality input uh such that they see it's um worth their time investment. So I think we will definitely um work, make it work, and um we'll come back with some suggestions as the power will proceed.
Understood, thank you. Yeah, so so I mean, I'll say like, you know, the small business support and utility bill relief that Mountain View has undertaken. You know, in a side comment, kind of stepping back, Mountain View is able to put uh large dollar amounts towards this because they've supported a lot of development over the past number of years. And politics aside, like that is what's enabling them to do that today. Um, we are not in the same position. And I I think we need to understand that in in terms of providing infusions to business, whether it's with matches or providing utility bill relief, uh we may not be in the same position as some of our sister cities. And that is the the reality we face face. Um, okay, I'm done for the moment on this item. And next up, I see council members Niss, Cormac, and Koo, and Councilmember Phil Seth, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
You want me to speak now?
You you are up.
Good. So I'm supporting this, but um maybe for a different reason. So I had a long talk with Margaret Ibe Kilker about this about a week ago, and I I think I mentioned it to several of you. But I've I've talked to a lot of people in the community, and one of their questions has been do you really want to oversee making small business loans to people in your community? Have to follow up on it, create the rules that go along with it and so forth. And that's what I think we should look at. I don't know if we really want this intense a program that is has to be run by our staff. So my question would be to ask staff if they would look at other ways this could be overseen other than directly by the city. Because that could, it could be expensive, we have to use staff for that and so forth. And and frankly, we're not a bank. We we haven't, we haven't done this in the past. I think it's worth looking at because I want to support our city. I'm very interested in where our small businesses are going. I'm I'm troubled because so many of them are in trouble. So we need to be looking at everything at this point. This is one more thing. But I also don't want to crush the staff as we go forward either, giving them more to look at as they struggle with the budget at the same time. So supporting it, but with that caveat that goes with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And any staff response there or?
Only appreciation for the recognition that um standing up a a complex new program would not be something that we could do in-house. So I believe we would start with what other uh partner or prospective partner we might be able to work with. And at the same time, uh complexity will be a challenge for anyone. And so certainly want to come back with some options to address the priorities that the council's already mentioned.
Sure. Um, two 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 quick questions, just jumping in. One, can we use existing resources that we've already allocated, things like the business tax outreach? Any of those contract dollars?
Well, uh, let's see. We- well, I'll I'll need to talk to staff to see what um resources might be available. I think um to a certain extent, it's uh not the contractual relationships that we have there. Um, but I think what you're suggesting is the dollars that were previously allocated for that. So we'll we'll need to look at it and and come back uh with how we might fund the effort ahead.
Okay. And then the second one is, uh, this specifically calls out Mountain View, which is one program among many in Santa Clara County and the Bay Area. Um, would it be helpful to uh abstract that a bit further?
Certainly, I think that we'll we we have good networks with other agencies, so um we'll want to look at what might be applicable uh from a variety of sources.
Okay, thank. Um, before Councilmember Cormac, would would you two be okay with Mountain View and other?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Um, before I start, um, I just want to get clarification. A few um of my colleagues have said that sixty percent of our revenues come from businesses. I don't, I don't think that's correct. Um, Ms. Noce, isn't it right? That sixty percent of our revenues come from taxes and only some portion of that is paid by businesses?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get that uh on the record. Thank you so much. I'm super excited to see item B. Thank you very much to the mayor for adding that. Um, uh, Councilmember Tanaka, I know, often asks if if the rest of us have looked at these programs, and and many of us have. Um, the Mountain View program uses the Los Altos uh foundation, um and it does work with donations. Um, I would be much more comfortable with A if we put uh put the um horse before the cart instead of the cart before the horse um and directed staff to suggest proposals that could work um for, I wouldn't even say work, direct staff to suggest proposals to support small businesses in Palo Alto. Which could include uh utility bill relief programs like Mountain View and other jurisdictions.
Is that an amendment, Councilmember Cormac?
It's a request for a friendly amendment, yes.
Okay, let's see.
Isn't that essentially what we're saying?
No, you're saying, look at Mountain View. That's the first thing that comes across. And I really, I really, this is so important. This is exactly what I was concerned about last week, which is basically funding businesses. It is super important to me that we that we talk about support and not basically stimulus.
Oh, I think I absolutely was clear. I'm not talking about stimulus, but I think.
But that's actually what the Mountain View program is. It is it is money from the city of Mountain View going to small businesses.
To to give them life support, right? So I I mean, I think staff, the staff feel like they understand the motion.
So so there there's an amendment on the table, and and I, Councilmember Cormac, I want to make sure that your language is reflected on uh the the draft minutes.
Okay, so after which could include, which could include utility bill relief.
You may be replacing letter A.
Yeah, it's a different version of A.
Do you do you want to get that spelled out and let's see where it is before we?
Sure. So separate A, I'll just talk through it. Direct staff to create proposals to support small businesses in Palo Alto. Get the businesses. Which could utility include utility bill relief? And so we have comma, um considering Mountain View and other um jurisdictions, programs. I don't limit it to Santa Clara County. Can I speak to it for a minute?
Yeah, and just to be clear, do you want this to replace letter A? Okay, so there is an amendment on the table for letter.
Sorry, could you show show what you just deleted?
Let's 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 leave. Thank you.
So again, I think we were just flipping the first half and second half of the sentence, which I'm fine with it. I think the intent tell was the same.
Hold on, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, Councilmember Cormac, it's it's your floor to speak to this amendment, and then we'll go to uh Tanaka and the boys.
Um, briefly, and this will get to, you know, when we're done with this, um we have done such a good job as a as a county, as a community, frankly, we're starting to do it as a state and hopefully as a country in the world to not be competitive with each other. Um, and I just, I want us to be um thinking about um who has the best option. Silicon Valley Community Foundation is doing something extremely similar. I wouldn't want us to be directing staff to follow a Mountain View structure, um which, you know, um when we have a little bit more time to to think about who the best partners would be.
Thank you.
So that's my proposal to Councilmember Tanaka to have B instead of A.
Councilmember Tanaka, will you accept that?
Um, so I think B and A are quite similar. The one, the part that's missing is um, so Mountain View was also for small business, but it was also for the residents. And so what I'm within ten of A was was, of course, I want to take care of the small business, which I think B does, but it doesn't consider residents. So now this program actually had two parts, right? One was to provide assistance to small businesses, right, which we've talked all about. And and I agree with all the things about, you know, public-private partnerships and, you know, trying to get more funding for, I think that's all great. But the other part of it was uh utility bill relief, right? So basically having longer payment plans um than we would normally have. Even giving this to the bills, and it's it's not not just for businesses, it's also for residents.
Oh, that was not clear at all.
Yeah, so that's a Mountview, Mountview's program is not just purely focused on business, focused. The small business part is, of course, but the utility bill relief is for both residents and for businesses.
Okay, so I would not be supportive of mixing and matching businesses and residents in this. So I I um would prefer B. And then if, yeah, go ahead. Looks like the city manager has something to say.
Yes, I think it might be helpful just to clarify. I did get information that our current um utility um sup- uh commercial uh support program does allow deferral of payments uh for up to eighteen months. So we've we've already covered that base uh within the utility, to the extent that the council is interested in talking about forgiveness, I think was the term you used, of utility bills. Just want to be clear that that will be a general fund expense. It would not be uh possible for us to provide relief to one segment of customers based upon the cost or or to be paid by others, so other uh customers within the utility enterprise.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think, like I said, we're we're in an economic depression. People are really hurting. And as the vice mayor said, we're trying to provide life support for people, both residents and for businesses. And so I don't why, of course, I want to support the business. I think also some residents need it as well. And um and so I I think uh I think B is a little bit more restrictive than A. I like to be a little bit more generous here and try to help more people in need um the small businesses and the residents in our community. So I I think I think A is a better choice for us right now.
Okay, so so one, do you not accept B as the amendment?
I I don't know.
Okay, all seconded, but just one quick comment. I also look at letter A as much more business supportive. Um, and that does not preclude what we can do for residents as well. And I think at the beginning of this meeting, the vice mayor mentioned like, hey, there there are many different areas we need to address, and it's going to be complex to go through these things. Um, I think the first hour of our discussion was around, you know, city staffing and issues around that. The second hour seems a little bit around uh business support and economics, and we can certainly uh happily go for another hour on how we support our residents. I don't think any of those uh preclude preclude the other. Um, and with that, I'll I'll second the Councilmember Cormac's uh amendment. So if we could just have that as a unfriendly amendment, please.
Yeah, uh, so I think I've already spoken to it. Um, if that's all right, Mayor Fine, do you want me to continue while they're putting it up?
Sure, um, if you have more comments at all, I'll put my notes.
I, this is the words matter a lot here, and um I think we should stick with our usual philosophy, which is we tell the staff what we want to do and not how to do it. Um, and that's that's my intention um with this amendment. Um, I I am not at all comfortable um with utility bill relief until we have a far more information. Um, and mixing and matching residents and businesses in this is is not something I'm comfortable with. I don't have enough information to make that decision tonight. Um, and I will just say finally, you know, I mean, you know, spend some time on the Silicon Valley Community Foundation organization. Like, this is one of those times, if you speak with people in philanthropy, and I've spoken with a lot of them recently, in addition to people who have businesses. Um, they are, they are really encouraging us to work directly with organizations that are set up to do this. And the Silicon Valley Community Foundation is the biggest one that's set up to do this. They already have the three funds. They already have the three funds for businesses, nonprofits, and residents, right? They're they're already doing that. So um, I'm not telling the staff how to do it. I'm describing for my colleagues that there um that there are people who do this all day, every day. Um, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Um, so for many of the same reasons, I'll be supporting the amendment. Um, I think the main thing is we shouldn't be too prescriptive here. I've certainly looked at and studied some of Mountain View's proposals. I think there is merit to some of them. I think I have questions about how some of them apply here in Palo Alto. And at the same time, there are one hundred other cities in in the Bay Area and four hundred other cities in California that we can look to um for knowledge and expertise. So I I don't think we should limit ourselves with one plan and then staff direction, as Councilmember Cormac mentioned. I think it's more about staff direction to solve a problem. staff direction to solve a problem we all acknowledge, which is small businesses are suffering. And that could be utility bill relief. It could be for Mountain View, it could be from somewhere else. At the same time, I also agree that, you know, matching donors and experts in philanthropy and community support is a really good approach. And staff can look to that as appropriate. So that's that's kind of my take on this. Next up I saw was Councilmember Koo, but I know we're talking about an amendment now, so please hit your hand signal if you want to speak to us. Councilmember Koo, and we're speaking to the amendment.
So the language is I like the language in A. Although, just to address what Councilmember Tanaka had said about also for residents for some of the utility bill relief, is it possible to put a C to address that so it's separate from item A? For the makers and the?
So I I think it's absolutely relevant. I I would encourage this time to maybe focus on the the small business side of of things. And perhaps after this or in the next round of council member comments, we we focus on resident rental support, things like that, just to kind of segment things. I mean, you 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 are welcome to make any amendments as you see fit.
Well, if if, well, if the opportunity is available to making it in a separate motion, then certainly I can do that and keep this just to the small businesses and small business support. I mean, I I think, I believe I can actually, I can support this. You know, especially with our small businesses in town that has been actually reaching out and looking for help. And I know a lot of mom and pop shops, like one of our favorite here in South Palo Alto is Copy Factory. I know in College Terrace and Evergreen, they have P printing, and those are all neighborhood serving stores. So definitely need to provide them some relief and some help. So I look forward to hearing more about this. But also, I'd like for you to consider and also in a way look at the people that are registered with the business registry and to acknowledge that they did follow what the city had had put forward to have people register. And they did register. So I would hope that we have comes consideration when it comes to their application so that we're acknowledging that they did follow what the city had wanted. Second part is also, by doing this, it also sends a message to our small business community that we do value their business here in 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 the city. And also, looking into the future, it also brings about it lets people know that we do take them, take small businesses seriously in our town and they can look back to this situation and basically know that we are trying to find a way to support them. So thank you for the motion. And I'll support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. I'm sorry if I've confused some of the the hand signals, but next I have Vice Mayor DuBois, then Councilmember Tanaka, then Councilmember Niss.
Yeah, I'll I'll be quick. I think we're getting to that point of the night where we're we're not productively spending our time. So again, I I I will support the amendment. I think it basically changed the order of the words. Both amendments said to look at Mountain View and other cities. I do think the amendment maybe is a little broader and that it's not limited to Santa Clara County cities. But I think we should move on. You know, we need to talk about the budget, I think, a little bit more tonight. So I will support the amendment and will support the motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Tanaka on the amendment.
Yeah, I I was just thinking, because I think the main issue that Councilmember Cormac has on this is that it's supporting the residents. I mean, I I think otherwise, the language that she has is fine. And so maybe what we should do is separate out utility bills for residents or utility bill relief for residents is a separate item. And then we could take a vote on that. But otherwise, I think the amendment is fine, except for that, except for the fact that it's leaving out one of our constituents, which is our residents, that are also hurting in our community. So we could perhaps debate that as a separate topic, but but for me, the language is fine. It's just that, except it's missing the residents. That's the that's the problem I have. So otherwise, I I would accept it, but maybe what we should do then is have a separate. In fact, I think there's a a rule, we actually have to separate stuff, so we could separate it out. And then vote on that if if people want to accept that, whether whether people want to you know, support that or not, we can find out.
Thank you. As I've mentioned, you know, we can certainly come around to another round of of questions. I don't think one of these things precludes the next. Councilmember Niss, and since it seems like this amendment has the votes to pass, I will ask you to be brief and it's ten PM.
I may be brief or not, just have to decide. I I just, I are you still including the roundtable for businesses?
Yes, the amendment replaces letter A.
Right, okay, I I just, I don't understand the difference between the two, other than it looks as though the substitute motion that Councilmember Cormac made drags it out, because this says direct staff to create proposals. It's that's plural, to support small businesses. And I think we're looking for something simple. I mean, you've got the votes, fine, but I I think you've, I think you've muddied the waters a bit. It simply said, you know, look at Mountain View and other Santa Clara County's programs for small business support. So I hope that's what we actually do in the end and it doesn't get diluted.
Thank you. Councilmember Philseth, any comments?
Did you go to bed?
Yeah, no, I'm hitting my, looking for my unmute button. This specifically business and doesn't include residents, right?
Correct. Okay, with that, let's all please vote on the amendment to amend the main motion. Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Aye.
Councilmember Philseth?
Yes.
Councilmember Niss? Councilmember Niss?
Yes, I unmuted. Hang on.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
I'll support it because I'm going to make a motion for for the residents after this.
That's yes, I vote yes. Also, so amendment A or the amendment replaces letter A.
Okay, so so then.
To Councilmember Tanaka, and if we can clear the board, please.
So, yeah, so I'd like to make the motion that we explore utility bill relief for residents in our city. And I think I spoke to it, why?
Okay, so there's a motion by Councilmember Tanaka to explore utility bill relief for residents. I see the city manager raising his hand. I just want to go to him because we've gone for a lot for a moment.
Yes, just for the purpose of clarification, I may not have been clear enough previously that we already have utility bill relief program for residents that includes both payment plans as well as we do have a specific low income rate assistance program for residents as well.
Well, I I like to expand it not just to lower as low income, but people, there might be people who lost their jobs, right? Maybe previously they're fairly high income and now they're not. Now they're no incomes. So I don't know how that works, but if it covers them, then fine. But I think, I think there are people here who maybe aren't a typical, you know, working at safety tech worker. But because of, you know, the six point six million people who are unemployed, might be really suffering right now. So maybe see magic tell me if they're covered too, then fine, we're we're done. If they're not covered, then I like this explored.
Let's see, I don't have the details on that program handy, so if anyone else of the staff has dived into it, then we could certainly get their response. If not, I might suggest it might actually serve the council to get better information before proceeding with this particular action. Your call, certainly.
Okay, is there anyone on staff who can speak to this?
I can't speak to it in detail, but I'm aware that there is a program and that the the utility works really closely with residents who have struggled with their bills to either get them into one of the low income programs or structure the bill to, you know, allow the rate payer to to pay it off over a long period of time. Maybe maybe we could do an info report on this item for next week before council considers whether there's anything else that's needed. And there are, by the way, some legal constraints in this area, as the city manager mentioned, in terms of shifting costs between rate payers and rate classes.
General fund, understood. Thank you. Is there a, this motion?
I I want to withdraw it because I think I think it's getting late and I think I think Molly has a good point. Let's just do it that way. Let's figure out what's 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 on the table first. And then if if it is not covered, then we can come back to it.
Okay, can staff, one interjection, can staff please come back with some kind of report on what that situation looks like for our residents?
Yes, we'll do.
Okay, so um, so let me try to finish up. Oh, sorry. Actually, I was going to try to finish up because I was going to move on, but, okay, so so, yeah, so I I'm glad that the motion passed on supporting our businesses because I think that's really important. You know, hopefully what comes out of 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 this is, you know, a lot of this is are hindered not just by the fees and taxes, but also by the process in terms of in terms of like when they have, when they try to reopen, they have to be permitting, right? How hard is it to get approval for things? So I'm hoping that some of the red tape that really makes it tough to do business in our city actually gets smoothed out so that it's easier for people to reopen when when the when the shutdown is is over. So you know, I I think, you know, for the past few years, I've been really harping on trying to be fiscally conservative in terms of not spending stuff like on our council chamber, which I don't even know we really need to do. Or if I don't know, is, are we still planning to spend about two, three million dollars on a council chambers or is that on hold too?
I think that, well, that project, let's see, is pending, but it'd certainly be part of your discussion for your upcoming budget.
Because I think things like that should be put on hold and money could be put towards different utility bills, for instance. Or or like, I know we put the solar calculator, do we really need to have that? That kind of stuff, I think, can be used to help defer some of the shortfall that we might have. I realize that that there's still a lot in the air, but it sounds like staff is planning to update us in terms of how do we make the ends meet? Because it's not like we have this fifteen to twenty one dollar shortfall. Not a really clear plan about how we're going to make this happen. But it sounds like, and I I guess I would love to know from the city manager, what is the timeline to get more clarity on? How do you make the ends meet for 2020?
Well, once again, the 2020 plan is an emergency response plan. It's really the fiscal strategy comes into play for 21.
Oh, no, I but but how are you, but how are you going to balance? So it does, so your thing is purely going to be from reserves then for 2020?
In large measure, yes.
Okay, okay, so that that's clear to me. Thank you. And then, speaking about the 2021. So it looks like you guys are estimating about a twenty five million dollar shortfall for next year, right? Next fiscal year?
Let's see, need Kylie to verify that number.
Thanks, Councilmember. And the projection that's provided in the staff report is not a projection for next year. It's what staff models when we look at the economic sensitivity analysis of our tax revenues based on our prior experience in other recessions. So this is looking at our experience. If you go back to that colorful chart during the Great Recession, as well as during the dot com timeframe, I'm modeling what the impacts typically are on our tax revenue base. Staff has not done an analysis of what this particular event will do on our revenue base yet.
I see. Okay, so you're just taking what what happened during the Great Recession as what's going to happen. But, okay, I thought you were trying to say that's really what what was going to be for next year or your projection. Because, yeah, because I, I mean, I think so far, the speed and impact of this has been much bigger than the Great Recession, even so far. And I mean, I don't think hotels went to single digit occupancy rates during the Great Recession. So I yeah, so I'm I'm thinking that the the shortfall for next year is going to be much, much bigger than a shortfall for this year because we've only had one quarter of the shortfall. It's going to take time for businesses to ramp up. So I think that's something that needs to be contemplated as we move forward. And that on on top of what Councilmember Koo talked about, which is that that the CalPERS pension, right, because of the market dropping, our contributions could be a lot higher. So I think there's going to be a double whammy there, two big double whammies. And then one question for the team manager is I was actually told by the the registry that the business registry that people that work from home, which is just about everyone these days, has to register for business registry. And I was really surprised by that. And I don't know if you could comment on that, because I don't think that was the intent of the business registry. And so I don't know if the city manager could talk a little bit about that, because that means that everyone maybe they worked in San Francisco, now they're working from home in Palo Alto. They have to register for business registry. It's kind of impractical and not the intent of what of what the business registry was, right? Even though, yes, it's a person working at home for business, but it's not, I don't think that was, it wasn't tense, those kind of people up. Is that correct?
I have to admit that I don't recall the particulars of where that lower threshold was set. I thought it was at one person or something to the effect as to how a business would be defined that's subject to the registry. Looks like perhaps Molly can chime in.
Actually, I don't have that piece of information, but I I am aware that the staff is working on an item to make adjustments to the registry and also to the downtown bid and some other ways to ease those types of programs. And I think that's on, tentatively on an upcoming agenda.
Okay, and that's following up on prior prior council direction to bring that back.
Okay, because they're telling people right now that if you work from home in Palo Alto, even if your company's located in New York, because you're working from home here, you got to register. And I don't think that's what we intended. So it's not like that's going to be clarified, which is great. And then, let's see, a few quick things about this, more about the social distancing. So I've talked to quite a few people about the parking at Foothill. Foothill is a large park. I understand that we want to keep everyone safe, but I'm just thinking that people are driving there. I mean, we could have someone there making sure that people aren't congregant, but otherwise, within Foothill, it's it's a gigantic park. And so I I guess I just wanted to understand a little more. I saw your your email on this, but this just seems very very you know, right now, everyone's having to stay at home and, you know, a lot of people are trying to exercise because that's also important for people's health. And it just seems like it's it seems like, given the size of the park, that we should be able to figure out a way to make people happy, will park further from each other. And still allow people to enjoy the the parks that we have in our city. So I don't know if the city manager could talk a little bit about that, but I know a lot of people are really disappointed about this.
Certainly, and we've heard from a number of residents that have suggested alternatives. To your point, Councilmember, I think the focus on the size of the park as the issue and the ability for any individual to handle their own social distancing, quite frankly, is missing the point. And the issue is our ability to manage that interaction and the calls on public service in order to manage a facility that has a variety of users. You know, again, this is, this is open for anyone when it is, when it is open for the purpose of individuals to choose how they will take advantage of that resource. And it falls upon staff, the rangers in particular, to be able to manage the interaction that even in some cases, calls on nine one one, calls for service when those interactions are not going well. So you know, it is a one example of a series of decisions that we've had to make that other agencies have had to make in order to really reinforce fundamentally the health order of stay at home and shelter in place. And shelter in place. And so our provision of facilities that ultimately result in gatherings. Is contrary to that order. And for that reason, we made the difficult decision to limit access to the parking facilities. I can tell you, there are still people at Foothill, at Rostradero, at Baylands. And they are getting there on foot or they are parking at a farther location in order to make access to the facilities. But they're making that choice. And again, short of closing the facilities or the the resources altogether. Which I think practically speaking, would be really difficult for us to implement. That what we're doing is trying to reinforce the health order, that people stay close to home. And not drive to areas that could be considered gatherings.
So I guess my only point is to get exercise, I'll walk around the block or rock around my neighborhood just to get exercise. And I tell you, I run a lot more trail that way than I think people walk around Foothill Park. So I understand rationale, but it just seems like there's a lot of demand in the community and I think it could be done safely. But anyway, that's just my feedback to you. I could think about it. The one other thing I wanted to ask about is Adobe Creek Underpass. And because now that people can't actually drive to some of these parks, right, the parking lots closed. If that underpass can be opened so that people can bike there or walk there, because otherwise it's a hell of a walk, right? A hell of a hell of a, you know, yeah, or bike ride, because you have to go all around or take a more dangerous route.
Member Tanaka, I believe the city manager highlighted that in an email to us all recently.
Oh, okay, great. So is it?
No, it's still under certain flood or water conditions that aren't safe in terms of liability or crossing. And so for the time being, until it dries up a bit more, we actually cannot open it.
Okay, so we're all open. Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you, guys.
Okay, just order of business, we had previously voted on the amendment. Which replaced letter A with the language in the amendment. And I'd like to ask us to vote on the main motion if we could.
About that.
Yeah. Okay, let's just go through the names. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yep.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
So actually, that was the question I wanted to ask because I thought we just voted on the amendment, not the overall motion itself. So, okay. I actually wanted to comment for a second on the overall motion, if that's okay.
Okay.
Can I still do that? Okay, just briefly. So I really like the the vice mayor's remarks and ideas about trying to do something that's leveraged. And I think if if that is ends up being in any way possible or practical. Which I think is is going to be really relevant here. I think that's really desirable for a number of reasons. One is that, you know, I I I hope we're not just going to pay somebody else's creditors. Okay, I think the spirit of this has to be, everybody's going to share, everybody needs to share the haircut. Our piece can contribute. I hope we don't end up just being a transfer to somebody else. And so I think the leverage is important there. I think there's a second issue, which is. You know, are we really going to be able to move the needle by ourselves? Is is the the activity that that we produce going to going to have a big impact just on our own unless it's part of a larger initiative? And, you know, there's a lot of enthusiasm for these kinds of things, and I think we all we all understand it. We all want to do something here. My sense is that these things sort of tend to to get into it. Once you once you act, there's a lot of devilry in the complexity. And once you start actually going through and figuring out what's practical, what's really going to cost where, what's going to work here and not work there and so forth. You know, two, a lot of these things sort of default to being kind of symbolic, symbolic kind of solidarity kinds of things, but actually don't push the needle that much. And I think our chances of of making a bigger impact, again, if we can be leveraged for other stuff, that's that's highly desirable. I think it's, we want to be careful we don't compete with other programs like PPP, for example. And then finally, on the utilities, you know, I think, you know, that's that's certainly one of the levers we have. Ten thousand dollars a month in utilities seems like a very, very large number for a small business to me. I would have thought typically you're going to see something that's many, many times smaller than that. And so again, the more it can be leveraged with other kinds of things to sort of get the scale up and then again, to make sure that it's. It's, you know, everybody shares the haircut kind of thing as opposed to, you know, we're making somebody else whole. That's all going to be good. And with that, I go to I.
Thank you, councilmember Phil Seth. All good comments. Have you have you fed your cat recently?
He doesn't think so.
Absolutely not. Okay, so councilmembers Cormac, Vice Mayor DuBois, councilmember Phil Seth, Earl Eyes, councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
And myself also votes yes. Okay, that motion passes. And Greg, is are those all your comments?
It is. Thank you.
Okay, so now it's my turn. I will try to be brief. I had a number of questions largely around the administrative leave portion, which we've kind of dealt with. So staff, I'll try to take those offline. I guess a couple of comments, and I will try to focus on one of the last pieces we haven't touched on yet, which is the 21 budget. So first of all, this is kind of our our long term challenge. We are, you know, we've dealt with some of the emergency stuff. We are now trying to deal with some of the medium term work. Long term is what are we going to do in 21 when we expect significant diminishment of our of our revenue? And how do we continue providing services? It may be prudent for us to communicate early and often about what we're doing in different funds to the public. So one, in the general fund, what do we expect the impact to be there? And what does that look like for an average or, you know, normal resident? In terms of utilities, what does that mean? I often find that a lot of members of our community. Are surprised by some of the changes we make in utilities or the increases in rates, things like that. When our hands are really constrained by a number of laws and regulations. And so communicating that's also important. And finally, on kind of the construction or infrastructure piece, what are we doing there? It seems like right now we're freezing a lot, and maybe we freeze a larger portion of the the capital improvement plan. And that's worth worth communicating as well. Councilmember Phil Seth did mention the payroll protection plan. I really cannot emphasize enough how important this is for our small local businesses. This is essentially a program where the the SBA, the Small Business Association. Or administration will provide something like two and a half times your average monthly salary. And so it's really important for small businesses to take advantage of this. And whatever the city can do to support that, I I really think we we should be in game for that. Few other comments, one or two questions, and then a quick motion. I think it's really important to communicate the utility shut off ban to businesses. I've spoken with a bunch of businesses who are not aware of that. So let's get that information out there. Educate the business community about SBA resources, specifically the PPP program. For members of the public, I would love us to stand up something in terms of. How can staff support our cities? How how can the community support our city staff? In terms of food donations or PPE donations to our emergency workers? And if if staff has any ideas around that, maybe it's a webpage, maybe it's a short communications campaign. I think that would be well received by the community. I agree with the vice mayor about a comment he made a few hours ago about workforce breakdowns. Where are different people working? Which ones of them can go remote and not by department? I think that'll be important. And then also agree with councilmember Ku about the previous changes in our revenue sources. What do those look like in dollar figures? The percentages are helpful year to year, but it's also nice to understand the magnitude. I'm just going to cut to the chase, I guess. So my my motion on the 21 budget is to bring the fiscal year 21 budget to the full council for development and analysis.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So really briefly, you know, we've just had a. Four or five hour council meeting on what we are looking at for the next two or three months. The work is going to be much harder in fiscal year 21, which begins in July. And. There are kind of two major reasons I think we should bring it the budget to the full council. The first is redundancy. Our staff is under tremendous pressure right now. As the city manager mentioned, they're not working forty hour weeks. They're working 24/7. Many of them are doing double duty and emergency services. And I think it is an additional and unnecessary step for our staff to take a 21 year budget. To our finance committee and then to the full council. Additionally, it is just coming into clarity, but the the enormity and magnitude of the decisions that we will be making on finance and and council. I really think deserve the full council's attention. We can't yet guess or put forward what those changes are going to be, but they're going to be significant. Changes in terms of service delivery in the city for residents, for businesses and for our city staff members. And I think that deserves the full council's attention rather than going through finance and then coming to council. Happy to chat with about this and, you know, perhaps entertain some amendments, but Mr. Vice Mayor, appreciate hearing on your side.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say I really believe in the value of council committees to really dig in and do detailed work. But has I really thought about this this year? I I actually really appreciated councilmember Niss's comments earlier on about the budget that. We're going to be in a fluid situation. I think saving time with our staff, having having the whole the budget come to the council as a whole makes sense. And again, it may be maybe a temporary budget that we need to revisit in September. Which I think is another reason that if we're going to have a bunch of budget amendments coming to us anyways. Maybe just having the whole council work on the initial budget makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. So let's go to a quick discussion on this motion. And if we can bring that up on the screen, that would be great. And then I see we have a number of attendees. One, still with their hand up. We truly appreciate your patience. After we vote on this, I have no more comments, so we'll go to members of the public. So I saw councilmembers Ku, then Cormac, but please hit your hand wavy if you you want to speak. Councilmember Ku.
Um, so I I, you know, with the period that we're in and the short timing. I think that, you know, this is the right way to go about, you know, planning on the budget. The state legislature is also convening in order to go through their budget. And they're going to pass, they're going to try to get a bare bone budget to the governor for him to sign and then revisit it in August or September. So I think that, you know, it's it's the right way to go about doing this, you know, given the uncertainty with the time with our pandemic crisis. So, you know, thank you for bringing that forward earlier when I mentioned the council of the whole. It was just a question, but I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Ku. Next up is councilmember Cormac.
I agree with the mayor's comments. I agree with the vice mayor's comments and councilmembers Ku's comments. And I'll just add two things. One is, we have a precedent for this when we did rail last last year, which was the biggest thing we were were working on as a committee of the whole. And I think that worked, given the importance of that topic and the the amount of details that were required. And that brings me to important, this is the most important work we will do as a council this year. For those of you who have served before, this is, these next couple of months may be the most important of your political career in terms of the contribution. We can make to the community. So I think we should all do that work together. And I think that, you know, the having the staff, you know, laser focused on the emergency response, which we do, sorry. Now you can see my real background. And then having, you know, other parts of the staff, hopefully not completely duplicated, focused on the future. Our staff is responding to the emergency. It is our it is our responsibility to help chart the future.
Thank you, councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I I can't see why not, right? So if I I think that I think the idea behind the committees is that it's supposed to. It's supposed to not take everyone's time to talk about the budget so that the budget when it goes to. Council is going to be like fully baked. And so it's a quicker for the council, but I think this year because of the. Number of changes that will have to be necessary in the debate that'll be that will have to happen. I think, why not? So, yeah, sure.
Thank you. I don't see signals from councilmember Niss or Phil Seth. But if you do want to speak, please just just chime in. Okay, let us vote on this motion. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Thank you. Count, Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yep.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
And myself votes yes. That passes seven to zero. Okay, thank you all very much. I have a lot more comments, but I will take them offline. I do want to take a moment to go to our public comment. And then I'll come back to council for additional comments, questions and motions. But just a reminder, it's 10:30. This is our normal time for a check in about whether we want to continue. Let's go to the public for a moment. If you do have additional comments after this round of public comment, please hit your hand signal and I'll get back to you.
Public member with the phone number four one two, go ahead and talk. You have two minutes. Please state your first and last name.
Is this for me?
Yes, it is. Your first and last.
My my first name is Rod. My last name is Pittman, P I T M A N. And I am both a a local business owner, although I'm not with the registry. And I am a resident. And the questions that I had originally, I'm going to take back to the clerk's office because they were very helpful. And you guys have done a wonderful job, and at some point you need to get some sleep if you can. But I have a a counter drone drone company. And and it has some IP that's specific to sanitation. And I founded a bioscience company with the help of Portland State and the senior NASA biologist, Ken Stedman. And so we are effectively emergency services workers or whatever you want to call us. And we're working on getting IP and stuff like that. But while I was on the phone listening to you all, I got a message. And this is not from NASA, and it's not from Dr. Stedman, and it's not verified, but I wanted to put it on your plate. So that you had it, so that you can vet it out, find out if it's real. I heard that the virus is shedding. And what that could possibly mean, and I'm not a doctor, haven't played one on television that I can remember. But relative to the antibodies test, which we also have have a line to. They can test for three antibodies. If it came back that somebody had the antibodies, people have been thinking that maybe what they could do. Is be a part of herd humidity, herd immunity, go back into the public and begin to help others again. If the virus is shedding and it reinfects, that's an issue that you guys need to put into your pipe. And and figure out relative to second wave and beyond and and help you with your strategizing. And on that note, I hope you all have a wonderful evening, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Pittman. We really appreciate you sticking with us until 10:30 at night. And thank you for the kind words. We don't get them often. I hope you have a good night, too. To the the clerk, do we have any other public comments?
No, Mr. Kohler has not raised his hand to speak.
Okay, Mr. Kohler, if you do want to speak, please do raise your hand. I give you a couple of seconds to hit that button if you're interested in speaking tonight. Not seeing you raising your hand, want to thank you for attending and joining this meeting remotely. So we now return to council. The first hand I saw was from the vice mayor.
Yeah, I'll try to be super quick, but on the nonprofit category. I'm a little bit concerned, well, very concerned about life moves. I understood Kristen in the staff report correctly. Were saying because we have our renter eviction law, we're not going to come back with anything before October. And Randy Suda, Palo Alto Housing, I think brought us a very clear letter. I talked to him afterwards. Just not providing any rent assistance is going to, I think, impact. Just uh not providing any rent assistance is going to, I think, uh impact the bonds that underlie our affordable housing projects. Um, and so my understanding is, well, I don't think we can wait until October. He also said that those residents are are lowest income residents won't be able to repay any accumulated rent owed through a payment plan. So I think we need to do better on on this one. I know we have a lot of other nonprofits. We have a lot of nonprofits that are not mentioned in the staff report. But this this uh situation with life moves with twenty thousand dollars in the bank is is very troubling. Um, and so I just wanted to make a quick motion that staff would agendaize a discussion. On rental assistance for low income housing and come back uh within like two months. Um, and and Ed, I don't know if you can comment if I'm misinterpreting or.
All second now.
Yeah.
I think that two month timeframe gives us uh sufficient time to understand the facts and the options in front of us and and be able to give you a a trajectory forward.
Okay, I mean, obviously, two months, uh, they're going to be out of money before then. But again, I I think this is all of our, a lot of, not all of them, but a lot of our affordable housing projects have these underlying, underlying financial instruments that count on those rent payments. Um, and so if there are any kind of housing vouchers or other programs that come out, I think we need to really be on top of those, just not wait until October.
Understood.
Okay, thanks.
So so one hundred percent agreed with the vice mayor on this. Um, seeing some of the emails from Life Moves and the Housing Corporation. There's a lot of vulnerability there and we we need to address it. Um, you know, I'm very thankful for Congresswoman Eshu and the work she did to help secure Palo Alto nearly three hundred thousand dollars in additional CDBG money. Um, perhaps that's one bucket for this. Um, but yeah, I I think we need to sharpen our pencils here. Um, I'm going to go to council member comments on this. Please hit your wave signal if you want to speak on this. I don't see anyone waving, but Lydia, it looks like you want to talk. Is that?
No, I was just saying, let's vote.
Um, so if there are no further questions on this one, uh, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Councilmember Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Phil Seth. I think you have to speak as the city attorney instructed me last week.
Yeah, I'm having trouble unmute, working my mic from here. Um, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
I agree with Lydia, yes. Vote.
I agree with Councilmember Niss, yes.
Excellent. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
I also vote yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. Um, I know it is getting late. It's ten forty. I do want to give anyone else an opportunity to speak on this item. Any other questions, comments, motions? If not, we'll have a full attend everyone after this special action item. We've got, you know, a couple more things to get through. Anything else here? Councilmember Ku.
Um, just very quickly, um, I just wanted to um, you know, first say again, thank you to staff for everything that they've did. They've done during this whole time and what's going forward, but also to many of our community resources, you know, the. There's the uh therapists that have, you know, kind of donated their hours. There's also the uh Citizens for Transportation and Affordable Housing Solutions who actually provided a plan. Um, they're very involved in um being involved uh with the emergency plans that we have in place. And of course, you know, for Palo Alto Community Fund, so I just want to extend the thank you to all the folks that are trying to work. And then there's also Manzanito Works who's been trying to uh wrap, to bring in childcare, uh to see if there's a effort to help with childcare. So thanks to our great community also.
Thank you, Councilmember Ku, completely agreed. Um, Councilmember Tanaka and then the vice mayor again.
Actually, just a quick question. So uh procedurally, do we actually have to vote? Uh, as a council on taking half of our budget stabilization reserve to last to kind of tie us through to the end of the year? Or 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 does the senior just have discretion to to do that himself? Maybe this is a question for Molly, but I, because I remember in the past when we, especially when we're taking like twenty million dollars or so out of our budget stabilization reserve, don't we have to? Vote on that somehow, I would think, right? I don't know, but tell me.
So if Kylie's on the line, she can help me with this. There are some movements of money between funds that the uh manager can do at the administrative level. But non-appropriated funds uh have to be voted on by councils. Kylie, do you have more detail on that off the top of your head?
Uh, actually, you're spot on. Um, so uh the interesting uh situation that we find ourselves in actually is that all of the funds that are being spent, at least right now. Not including the additional kind of programs that have been discussed tonight have already been appropriated um by council. It's the revenue that's falling. Um, so I think staff's intention would be to bring something back to have council formalize and actually uh approve the the draw on the budget stabilization reserve at a later date.
I I think that's a good move, just in terms of transparency, you know, optics, because I think it's important that the community understands and we're basically. And and you know, during times of need, it's actually when we should draw down a reserve, right? And general kind of support the idea. But I think the community really should know about this because we're talking about a lot of money and people should know where the money is going, right? A lot is going to, you know, sustaining our employees. Maybe we should know that, so. Um, maybe some of our employees, maybe some of the businesses, maybe some of the residents, but people should know what's happening. Uh, because it may not be clear about how we're making the ends meet.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. Um, next is Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, uh, super quick uh update on the schools. I mean, spring break this week. They're supposed to shift to online learning next week when they come back. Also, things like the AP tests have been shifted online. On the childcare front, um, I know the city has been working on a program with Care.com. As Councilmember Ku mentioned, Manzanito Works uh sent us all a proposal this afternoon. Uh, they say they've identified the need for several hundred uh spots for kids for first responders. Um, and they have two groups interested in participating. So I I mean, you're going to hear a little bit more about that and understand that that's uh something that the the city should be supporting. Then the last thing is uh, I've been talking to the faith community on and off. They have basically uh kind of put in a joint website. They've been signing up volunteers who are kind of standing by if needed. Uh, but they're not really actually deploying them at the moment. And then the last point, um. Yeah, and I brought up a pre-council. I think we have an item like this. We really should split it up. I understand we need to have topics to agendize it, but. Um, I think we could have had a business topic and a nonprofit and a budget topic. Uh, this is just a huge item tonight, so I'm glad we got through it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, totally agree. We should split this up in the future. I think tonight was kind of working through as as I've referred to it as a ball of spaghetti. And going forward, we'll have different strands that we've kind of laid out for staff tonight in a couple of different motions. Uh, I think we should address.
Quite a summary. Can I say something? May I?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, have you reached the point where we can give um acknowledgements and thanks to people or not?
I see the city attorney nodding no. Um, why don't we wait to council member comments and.
I I think she was asking if you were a council member comment and you're not yet.
I was asking, exactly. Thanks for the interpretation, Molly.
We have a few more items. Um, the only thing I will mention, just just closing off this item now. Um, there are a lot of ideas floating around, um, a lot of offers of support and help. I would just encourage everybody listening and all of us to kind of redirect our efforts at existing initiatives. Um, Councilmember Cormac referred to a number of community foundations which are working on these problems. And I think we are all stronger and safer together. Um, so rather than trying to stand up. New specific efforts here in Palo Alto, as much as we can align ourselves uh with existing efforts, I I think does benefit us. So that's just kind of advisory. Okay, with that, let's close out this item number one at ten forty five P M. Um, do we have any agenda changes, additions and deletions?
We do not.
None. Do we have any oral communications?
No, we do not.
I'll move the minutes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll second it. Um. Please raise your hand if you have any comments on the minutes. Otherwise, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Councilmember Niss. Liz on the minutes.
And yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the minutes passed seven to zero. Thank you very much. We have two items on the consent calendar, items number three and four. I will move the consent calendar. Is there a second? I think that was Councilmember Cormac. Thank you. Um, so moved and seconded. Uh, are there any comments on the consent calendar? Please raise your hand in in the Zoom app. If not, okay, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the consent calendar passes unanimously. I'm sorry, I should have asked, are there public commentators on the the consent calendar?
No, there is not.
Thank you. And we move to city manager comments.
No further comments for me.
I don't know whether to say thank you or just just laugh. Um, we move on to our action items for the night. Uh, item number five, the second reading of an adoption of an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on residential tenant evictions. Resulting from the COVID nineteen emergency. Um, does staff have a brief presentation on this?
This is Molly Stumpf, the city attorney. So we'll skip the presentation and I'll just make a few comments, so.
Um, I'm done this and I didn't couldn't jump in in time, so um let me just step out of the room for a minute, sort of.
You're recusing yourself, understood.
Right.
Yes.
Councilmember Niss is recused. Um, okay, so this is, this item is before you to finish work uh for the moment. On your eviction moratorium, and there's two pieces of business before you tonight. One is your residential ordinance and the second is the issue of a commercial uh eviction moratorium. So very quickly, you remember that on the twenty third of March, you adopted an urgency ordinance, so that's in place now banning um evictions of residential. Uh, tenants of residential buildings. The day after you did that, the county also adopted an ordinance and it applies here also. It's very similar to the city's ordinance. Uh, but it's slightly different, uh and we'll address that in a minute. The state then a few days after that also added a piece in as well. So all three of these apply. So what's before you tonight is the second reading of the permanent ordinance. So you did the urgency and the first reading on the twenty third, and now it's the second reading on the permanent. So what we would, we we recommend is that you adopt the residential moratorium on second reading with some very minor changes. That are intended to bring it more closely into line with the county ordinance. The county ordinance is going to apply anyway, and these changes just reduce any confusion. Um, the one change is um, one that was advocated by housing advocates. Um, and that is to expand the covered group to not only people who are evicted. For non-payment of rent, but also who are evicted for a no-fault reason, and they've been affected um by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And that is a feature of the county ordinance and it's recommended by the housing advocates. Uh, the Silicon Valley Housing Advocate Group. The second change is to require a landlord who is evicting their tenant to state their reason. Um, and to in- inform uh the tenant of their rights by giving them a copy of our ordinance and also um complying with the county's requirement. The county is going to have a form that the um, the landlord has to to provide to the tenant. So that's just helps to educate the the tenants about their rights. So that that's the item that's um before you on the residential. On the commercial, you asked us to look at a commercial eviction uh protection. And what happened is the day after you acted, the county adopted their ordinance that addresses both residential and also commercial. The county's ordinance is pretty broadly protective. It's it covers more businesses probably than. The council was indicating it was um wanting to focus on. Um, it will apply here regardless of whether you also have a local ordinance. It basically says any non-residential tenancy um where the tenant uh qualifies. Under the federal Small Business Administration thresholds for size, which are actually quite substantial. So it will cover a lot of businesses. Um, those tenants are protected from eviction. Um, so we rather than work up our own program because that one is quite protective and it does apply here. Um, we are revisiting this with you. Um, is the council supportive of us? Holding off on a local program when there is a county one that applies here and um seems to accomplish the goals that the council was contemplating. So those are the two items and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, um, to our city attorney. Uh, the first lights I see are from Councilmember Ku and then Vice Mayor DuBois.
Um, since we've gone through that um last um previously at the previous meeting on this uh, on the emergency ordinance and the changes. Um, that uh city attorney had mentioned is actually uh beneficial towards um the the residents here. As well as the county's um, uh small commercial, I mean, the commercial uh moratorium on evictions. I'd like to uh make a motion to move this forward. To adopt.
Thank you. So there's a motion by Councilmember Ku to move the staff recommendation forward. And before I ask for a second, just to be clear, the staff recommendation is on the residential side? And it doesn't include anything additional on the commercial side? Is that true?
Well, the clerk has put it up here, so what we said on the commercial side was discuss and provide direction. But what I understand Councilmember Ku might might be saying is she agrees with our sentiment that uh commercial eviction protection locally is not needed at this time.
Uh, with the count, with the counties in place, then we can just um follow what county has since it's uh more protective and broader.
Yes. That's the recommendation. So I guess I would say part B is to um.
Redundant.
Yeah. We could delete it or we could just say um, uh, we're doing this already, but we can um uh message the county's ordinance, you know. You know, uh, make sure that uh local businesses are aware of the county ordinance that protects against commercial evictions.
Councilmember Ku, is that um okay by you?
Yes.
Okay, and I will, I will second your motion. Would you like to speak to it?
Um, no, I think Molly said everything.
Okay, um, just speaking this quickly, I think it is important that we adopt this ordinance as as a temporary moratorium and not just urgency. Um, for residents in Palo Alto, and then on the commercial side, um. You know, having looked at this, um, I'm persuaded that the county ordinance is already uh protective enough for our non-residential uses. Um, before we were just looking at commercial uses, this is actually broader than that in a few ways. And um, from personal experience, I've already shared the county ordinance with a few businesses in town that were facing eviction and they're working on it with their legal teams. Um, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and thank you for clarifying that B. So Molly, quick question on. On page three, we say our ordinance pretty much aligns with the county except for the issue of uh impacts for medical costs. Why why not just make our ordinance include that as well?
Um, our ordinance does include. Income loss from an illness, but it doesn't include specifically expenditures on. Medical services. Um, so our ordinance, I'm looking at page, bottom of page four. Uh, other similarly caused reason resulting in a loss of income. Oops, wait.
The top of top of page three.
Top of page three.
So you're saying they would align the county ordinance, but the county ordinance could. Expire before ours does, basically.
It's it's. Seems unlikely that it would. We could note this and return to expand our. Ordinance if we found ourselves in a position where the county. Was releasing their protection and. We wished for a longer period of time to retain this eviction moratorium.
Okay, it just seems like we're pretty much aligned except for that area. Just seems a little little strange. So how how are we making it clear? To people. Where the city ordinance takes effect versus the county ordinance. These are all new ordinances. It seems like there's a lot of room for confusion.
Yes, it's very unusual in my line of work for a county. To. Pass what is what we call a police powers regulation that. Applies within incorporated cities and towns. And this is only happening here because the county has these extraordinary powers in a public health emergency. Otherwise, they they don't have the power to do this. They their ordinances always only apply in unincorporated areas. So there is not this overlap. So we do have this three-way overlap and here's the situation. All three apply. Tenants can use any. All of them or any of them that best fits their situation and protects them. And we have messaged it that way. So I have worked with. Megan Horgan Taylor to make sure that we're pushing out in our public communications. Information about our ordinance, but also about the county ordinance and. The state executive order is not as protective or detailed. So that one seems unlikely. To be, yeah, an advantage.
So it's also like on our website, we refer to the county ordinances and.
We do.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I'm just worried about confusion. The towards the end, section seven. It has. Well, it talks about documenting impact from COVID nineteen. I'm just curious like how hard that's going to be for some people if their company closed down. Are you at all concerned about? You said you need a letter, a paste of or bank statement.
Right. And so we drafted it to say that these are not the exclusive forms of documentation. So there are other ways that people can document this. Also, as a remedy. We have not. Said this is only on tenants. We have said that the city itself. Can enforce this ordinance. So we have some ability to. Be advocates in that regard and. Encourage a liberal reading of this documentation requirement. There should be some documentation. It's not intended to. Forgive rent or wholesale. Allow non-payment of rent for for any reason. It's for these COVID reasons.
Right. Okay, yeah, well, thank you very much for revising this and I'll I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Please raise your hand if you want to speak on this item. I don't see anyone else. Okay, let's vote. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Niss recused. All right. Thank you everyone so much for that. We've worked our way through all of our items for the night. We now have Councilmember questions, comments and announcements. And just for brevity, I'm going to go alphabetically if that's okay. Allison, I see you smiling already.
Yes, I'd already hit my blue hand, so I can un-hit that. I just wanted to say two things. First is in the informational report, I'm sure you all read that the fire department is fully staffed for the first time in a very long time. That's something to celebrate and we should all be very grateful for it, especially right now. The second thing, and I don't think we talked about this last week, if we did forgive me. But it is census time, so if anyone is still listening. This is the time that people should be going to two zero two zero census.gov and filling that out.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, again, I I really just want to thank staff again. I know this has been stressful for everybody, I think. And so far, we've been very lucky. We haven't hit the surge, but. Yeah, and I think we just got to keep working hard. I appreciate what's being done and. And like we said before, I think now we're in this situation where we we have to start looking down the road a little bit. Now we're going to be juggling. An extra ball in terms of planning with with everything else that's going on, but. You know, and please, please thank everybody on your staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. On that note, I would ask all of us to talk to our networks. And ask them to please send staff another appreciation. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Amen. Amen to that discussion. Just briefly. On the auditor RFP. We have engaged management partners to help develop that. Expect to have a draft of that by early next week for the C A O committee to review. And we're working on an active timeline, hoping to get all this wrapped up before the summer break.
Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Thank you, Eric, for doing that. So I'm chair of the committee and Eric's doing the work, which is just about perfect. And he will do a great job. So Tom, I want to pick up on what you said. Second that. Also, people have been doing an astonishing job. And let me also do a shout out to Joe Semidion. Who did nearly two hours of a radio program on Sunday. Probably most of you heard it. Had some technical trouble at the beginning, which I think was frustrating for him. And but he has really delivered on this and I just want to say. Thank you to a former former city council member, mayor and so forth. We really appreciate what he's doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ku.
I just wanted to bring up that. Especially to staff to and to the mayor to look at, to look into Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. They're continuing on with their methodology planning and also. Looking at the regional forecast new needs, which in with our COVID nineteen going on right now, it might be something that we should visit and look at. And maybe write a letter of comment to it. We should certainly discuss that with with public input. And then also, I'm a little bit concerned about League of California Cities Housing Blueprint. Which they which is not really consistent with their mission statement and purpose. So I'd like for staff to also bring that forward or perhaps look at it and make a. Send send a letter stating stating such. But in any case, that, but also to piggyback on what Councilmember Niss said. It was a great call with Supervisor Semidion. And they actually did a poll. With the group that was on the phone and out of their poll, it said fifty-four percent of the people were very concerned. And wanted to ensure that hospital. The hospital workers are taken care of so that when the surge happens that they're not impacted by it or getting sick with it. The other one, twenty-one percent was for to ensure that our senior and vulnerable population is safe also. So again, this is a highly transmittable disease, which is why it's something that we have to be very vigilant on and to. Make sure that we flatten the curve early on. I want to remind also a lot of the youth that are not in school today. And they probably won't be in school until the end of the year are missing out on their prom, their graduation and a lot of other things. A lot of people are missing out on a on a lot of things. So we need to kind of. Really make an effort on flattening the curve. And for people that end up in the ICU or in the hospital, I think that we have to be reminded that. They're in there alone. They can't have family members in there with them because it's a highly transmittable disease. So. I hope that we can all remember that and as we're going out and talking to our supporters that we need to take care of this. And sooner. As soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ku. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so Adrian asked me to work on trying to get the Zoom meeting going and. That was my assignment. I can tell you, it looks like it's it's complete. So really wanted to thank staff for making that possible. You know, I think I think we had a productive meeting. I think it's pretty flawless, you know, we had no Zoom bombing going on, which is great. I think everyone could be heard. We were all able to discuss things. I think staff is able to call from home, so they don't have long commute after the meeting, even though the meeting went really long. So I think I'm really pleased with that and I'm going to check it off my list as done. So thank you staff for for making that happen. The second I just want to talk about, and I I think this is actually kind of a really nice thing is. Nice thing that, I know, I think. I think California, because we did shelter place further fairly early, we haven't been terribly impacted like New York and some other places. The thing that has been a big impact is the economy and. You know, we've been blessed for the past decade of having one of the best economies in our lifetime, one in the country's history. And you know, right now, I think the seven of us, right? Even though we may have different views on other topics. But on on this topic in terms of making sure that people are back to work, that people are. Able to fill afford to pay the rent and the mortgages and able to, you know, buy the food and all that stuff. I think we all also must get united behind. And so I think. There was some clap that the the. Bright spot in all this. Is that I think we can all unite behind this and I think it's going to take all of us working together to really get us out of this. I mean, everyone's calling it a depression right now and it's going to be hard. It's going to be difficult. It's going to take a lot of shared sacrifices like everyone's talked about. So I think we have to keep all three constituents in mind. We have to keep in mind our residents. And I think they need to come first, our businesses and our employees. I think it's really important that we take care of them and it's going to take all this working together. So I look forward to. Being more united and trying to work together to figure out this really difficult problem because it is. I forgot who said it, but it's going to define some people's political career perhaps because it is such a difficult problem that we're going to have to overcome. So. Really appreciate everyone's support and look forward to figuring out how we solve this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. So just stepping back for a moment, I'll be honest, the first. Two or so weeks of this whole crisis were pretty harrowing for me and I think for all of us and for our staff and our families. But as I mentioned at the beginning, I really do feel we're moving into a new phase. Where it's looking a bit down the road to strategize about what we do in the medium and long term to keep our community safe. And, you know, in the best case to restart our economy that may be out longer than we really want it to be. A few quick comments, just sharing some stuff I've been hearing. We have had innumerable offers of help. From groups. I've just got a couple written down here. The Ford Foundation, Cisco Foods and Sealy Posturpedic. Sealy Posturpedic was offering to. Connect a whole bunch of mattresses with the hospitals and apparently the hospitals need that and that's great. So there's a lot of effort in terms of supporting the resources and institutions we need right now. And I will just say on behalf of the whole city, we deeply appreciate it and keep those offers coming. At the same time, we really do need residents to take initiative, groups like the emergency services volunteers. Groups like Cool Block. It's really important that if folks have good ideas about how to help their neighbors or a business, please just do it. Go for it and work with your neighbors to build a coalition. Speaking to a number of the hospitals around here. This morning on our on our CCC call. All three hospitals reported roughly that. Things were the same as last week. They still have some trouble finding P P E. They're still somewhat worried about staffing and daycare. But things have not gotten worse and I think that is. A bit of a good sign for us. So I'm cautiously optimistic. For some of our prospects in terms of dealing with this public health crisis. We are not out of the woods and we need to. Put more effort and people behind this crisis, but that that was encouraging to me at least. Two last comments, one kind of more personal. Having walked a lot more recently than I walk around Palo Alto and I walk around Palo Alto a lot. I have noticed a real increase in speeding and unsafe driving behaviors. So please, if you are out there driving for an essential activity, please follow the rules of the road. Our police department and the C H P are increasing their enforcement, so it's in your best interest. And especially with all those bikers and pedestrians out there, please follow the rules of the road. And then finally, something I mentioned earlier, do send our staff and other agencies a note of support. It struck me the other day, we've received thousands of emails about ideas and questions and things the city should be doing. And very few of them were messages of gratitude. And I think we all in this community owe it to our nonprofits, to our staff, to our fire department, our police department, the public health department. To send them a note of gratitude and just say thank you for the work that they're all doing beneath the surface. And with that, I guess I would like to adjourn our meeting in deep gratitude of the work of our healthcare and public safety workers who are keeping this community. So safe. Everyone, thank you all so much. Hope you guys will have a good night. Ciao.